Sure, planning board. Can we get a roll call, please?
Sure. Mayor Donches. Mike Peterson.
Here, home alone.
Scott Leclerc.
Here and alone.
Adam Barley.
Here and alone.
Maggie Harper.
Here and alone.
Alterwoman Janet Tenta. Alterwoman Jan Schmidt. Dan Hudson.
Here alone.
Ed Weber.
Here alone.
Bob Ballinger.
Here and alone.
Larry Hirsch.
Here and alone.
Alright, we have a quorum.
Okay, great. I'm gonna go ahead and read the speaker of the meeting. Just a reminder, everybody who's online here that isn't a board member, please go ahead and mute your microphones. I'll, I'll call when there might be a public session here and later on, so. Okay, so this is a reminder, my name is Scott Leclerc. I'm the Chair of the City National Planning Board, and again, this is the 6th of May, 2021 Planning Board Meeting. As Chair of the Board, I find that due to the state emergency declared by Governor Sununu, as a result of the COVID-19 pandemic, and in accordance with the Governor's Emergency Order Number 12, pursuant to Executive Order 2020-04, this public body is authorized to meet electronically. Please note, there's no physical location to observe or listen contemporaneously to this meeting, which was authorized to meet electronically pursuant to the Governor's Emergency Order. However, in accordance with the emergency order, I am confirming that, one, we're providing public access to the meeting via telephone and additional access possibilities by video. We are also tele- telecon, video teleconferencing utilizing Zoom. Public access to the meeting is provided via Zoom, and a link to the meeting is contained in the meeting agenda available on the city's website. Meeting can also be streamed to the city's website, at www.nashvillenh.gov front slash three one eight, front slash CTV, on Nashville's community link, and the public may also view this meeting on Comcast Channel 16. Number two, I'm providing public notice of the necessary information for accessing the meeting. If you do have trouble accessing the meeting, please call six zero three five eight nine three one one five. They'll help you connect. Lastly, in the event the public is unable to access the meeting by the methods that I've just described, the meeting will be adjourned and rescheduled. I'm in control of the meeting, and to the extent practicable and advisable, the Board will follow the procedures as identified in its bylaws. The applicant will present their case, followed by questions by the Board. Allow, allow for a rebuttal period as best as possible for persons wishing to speak in favor, opposition, or have questions of the plans, and then the Board will deliberate and determine an outcome. Applicants, their representatives, and other individuals that were required to appear before the Board are appearing remotely, and they're not required to be physically present. These applicants, their representatives, and other individuals required to appear before the Board may have contacted the Planning Department to arrange an alternative means of real-time participation if unable to use Zoom. Please note that all votes taken tonight will, will be done by a roll call vote, and Planning Board meetings will be held electronically until it's been deemed safe to conduct more typical meetings at City Hall. The Board, the Planning Department, and the city, thank everyone for their understanding and patience. Okay. Next up on the agenda, we have approval of some minutes. These were the 22nd of April, 2021. Anybody from the Board had a chance to review those minutes and want to make a motion as to whether they can be accepted as written, or they need any amendments? From the Board. Mr. Barley.
To Chair, I would make a motion to accept the minutes as written.
You have a motion by Mr. Barley to approve the 22nd April 2021 minutes as written? Do we have a second on that?
I'll second it.
Second by Mr. Hirsch. Any further discussion? Okay, can we get a roll vote on that, please?
Mike Peterson.
Yes.
Scott Leclerc.
Yes.
Adam Barley.
Yes.
Maggie Harper.
Yes.
Dan Hudson.
Yes.
Ed Weber.
Yes.
Bob Ballinger.
Yes.
Larry Hirsch.
Yes.
That motion passes eight to zero.
Okay, thanks. Next up, Communications. Everybody from Planning, have any thing to add?
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the Planning Board. Today, Chris sent out an email, and I'll quickly go over the items that we received after the packets were mailed out. First up was for 16 Gussable Ave, a letter from Steve Auger dated April 30th to Joe Mendola, addressing some engineering comments. 537 Amherst Street, we received an email from Marco Paglia dated May 5th that the Fire Marshal's Office has accepted the revisions. There's a revised plan for 452 Amherst Street. 115 Concord Street, we received an email from Marco Paglia dated May 5th regarding some revisions. Then we did receive some communications regarding 115 Concord Street from the following abutters. Margaret Werner, Kathy and Jean Tellier, Andrea Rebeck, and Lorna DeLuca. For 147 Daniel Webster Highway, we received an email from Joe Mendola dated April 30th with some engineering comments. For L West Glenwood and 117 West Hobart Street, there was an amended staff report. For 57911 Domain Avenue, there was a letter from Chuck Ritchie from Fieldstone Land Consultants dated April 20th, addressing engineering comments. And then also for 579 and 111 Domain Avenue, there was an email from Joe Mendola dated May 4th with some engineering comments. And then also in your packet, there were the minutes of the April 22nd meeting, and that's all I have.
Okay, thanks a lot. Alright. Alright, report a Chairman, Committee, and Liaison. I don't have anything yet. Do you have anything?
Yes, the HTC did meet. There was one applicant just had a sign very simple and actually updated the quality of the sign that was there. 40 Concord Street was rejected. The plan was rejected because of the, it's not complementary to the, or it's not in line with the rest of the houses that are there, even it's dated, even though it was dated in 1956, around that era. The way that it was designed did not complement that at all, so the, the historical district commission did reject the plan as it appeared to them. That's it.
Okay, thanks a lot. Alright, moving on with the agenda, a couple items. Just for the Board here, we've got three old business items concerning the landing in Nashua. I'm just gonna read in the just the, the numbers on the front, but I'm gonna, I, these, they're vast to, to continue this, the, this tabling till the, was it the 20th, Matt?
Correct.
20th of May 2021, so I'm gonna be looking for the Board just to make a motion on all three. We can do one motion that contains all three to continue those three items. And again, these are items A21-0028, A21-0029, and A21-0062, all of them being the Landing at Nashua LLC care of Dick and the owner. And these are all regarding the two Eastbrook Road, two East Spitbrook Road sites. So, anybody from the Board want to make a motion on the continuing ceremony, Mr. Barley?
Mr. Chair, yeah, I'll, I'll make that motion. Again, so the motion would be as to old business subdivision plan, case A21-0028, and old business site plans A21-0029 and A21-0062. As all three cases that we continue them to the May 20th, 2021 Planning Board meeting.
Hey, thank you, Mr. Barley. So we have that motion to continue those three agenda items. Do we have a second? I see Mr. Ballinger's hand up.
Yes, I'm sorry, I was on mute. Second, Mr. Chair, thank you.
Okay, so every second by Mr. Ballinger, any further discussion on that? Alright, let's get a roll vote on that, please.
Mike Peterson.
Yes.
Scott Leclerc.
Yes.
Adam Barley.
Yes.
Maggie Harper.
Yes.
Dan Hudson.
Yes.
Ed Weber.
Yes.
Bob Ballinger.
Yes.
Larry Hirsch.
Yes.
And that motion passes eight to zero.
Okay, thanks a lot. Next up, Matt, can you confirm if, I'd like to look at, it's really an old business plan, it's A21-0073, and it's an extension. I'd like to take that case next, since it's, it's an old business case. Do we have an applicant for that on, on the line? And if you are that applicant, you can speak up.
Do you know if Earl is going to be present for this, Steve Auger? I'm sorry, just Earl had.
He is on here.
Yeah, he is on there, Matt.
Yeah. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board. Yeah, you said old business, I think we're listed under new business.
Yeah, I'm gonna take that next, so let me, let me get the Board to, I assume you're ready to talk on that, so.
Certainly, yes.
So can I, I get a, anybody from the Board regarding A21-0073, it's a site plan, I say, this is Benchmark Senior Living, Nashua Crossing, one-year extension to NR1924, application and acceptance of a property located at 672 and 674 West Hollis Street. Can I get a motion as to whether that extension application is complete and ready for jurisdiction?
So moved.
Alright, thank you, Mr. Weber. We have a motion to take jurisdiction of this item. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Peterson. Any further discussion? Okay, can I get a roll vote on the jurisdiction, please?
Mike Peterson.
Yes.
Scott Leclerc.
Yes.
Adam Barley.
Yes.
Maggie Harper.
Yes.
Dan Hudson.
Yes.
Ed Weber.
Yes.
Bob Ballinger.
Yes.
Larry Hirsch.
Yes.
That motion passes eight to zero.
Okay, thanks a lot. So, Earl, if you want to just present this extension, you can go ahead.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, the proposal very quickly is for a 14-unit, two-story 11,320 square foot addition to, to the existing Nashua Crossing Senior Living Center. We and we're proposing some, some drainage improvements, landscaping, lighting, and 12 new parking spaces for the, for the additional units, and to bring the total count up, the percentage up somewhat. We received minor waivers on the original approval for the parking and the land, a minor, very minor one for the landscaping. It was approved on April 23rd. And as you know, just starting a very tough period for senior living facilities, and Benchmark Senior Living made the decision to kind of shut things down and, you know, just cope with the pandemic crisis that had just gotten started and was so heavily affecting their, their business. So now that we're coming out of it, they, they feel they're in a position to pick this back up where we left it off a year ago and continue where we were. So basically, we, we have about a half a dozen housekeeping engineering items to take care of. Otherwise, we were, we were done with the process. So we're here asking for an extension so that they can resume, pick up where we left off a year ago.
Okay, thanks. Any questions of the applicant by the Board? Just to confirm, Earl, there's no, no changes to the previous packet other than the responses to engineering comments?
Exactly, no, there are no changes. We, the plan is literally set for the past year, so the only changes would be just responding to those housekeeping items.
Get anybody from the Board, Mr. Ballinger?
But, thank you, Mr. Chair. Are there any other restrictions on, on West Hollis Street at the moment? I, I thought we took up a case recently where, where there was a paving moratorium. I, I didn't know if, if that extended to this portion of West Hollis Street, and if that affected the, the one-year extension?
I, I believe it does, but we don't encroach into the road at all. We're extending utilities from onsite. We have everything we need right onsite. So fortunately, we don't, we don't have to fight that battle or, or wait, wait out the time. I haven't checked in a while. I, I want to say there's approximately a year left in that moratorium, but as I said, it does not affect us.
Thank you, Mr. Blaschford. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay. Any other questions by the Board? Okay, hearing none. I'll go ahead and open this up to the public regarding this item, which again is A21-0073 Benchmark Senior Living. Anybody in the audience wishing to speak in opposition or concerned or have a question of this plan extension? Go ahead and unmute, state your name and address for record, please. Okay, any hands up, Linda?
I don't see any, yeah.
Okay, so hearing none, give the Board one more chance. Any further questions by the Board? Okay, hearing none. I'm gonna go ahead and close the hearing on this item. Move into the meeting, so pretty straightforward extension. Obviously, we've seen quite a few of these over the last year. Looking forward to the project moving ahead, so. Anybody else have any discussion in the meeting here, or? Somebody want to make a motion? Weber, go ahead.
Yeah. Uh, I'm not shy. New business, A21-0073 site plan. One-year extension at 672 and 674 West Hollis Street. Seeing the plan does meet NRO 19146D with all prior conditions and approvals are incorporated herein as part of this plan.
Alright, so we have that motion by Mr. Weber to approve A21-0073 with all prior conditions. Stipulations, do we have a second on that?
Second, Mr. Chair.
Second by Mr. Ballinger. Any further discussion on that item? Okay, can we get a roll vote on that, please?
Mike Peterson.
Yes.
Scott Leclerc.
Yes. Yes.
Maggie Harper.
Yes.
Dan Hudson.
Yes.
Ed Weber.
Yes.
Bob Ballinger.
Yes.
Larry Hirsch.
Yes.
That motion passes eight to zero.
Okay, thanks a lot.
Great, thank you very much.
Yeah. Okay, next up on the agenda, this is a new business conditional special use permit. It's agenda item A21-0070. This is Vickery Realty Trust Care of the Meg Company's owner, NHCG LLC, care of James Rafferty, President, GM, and applicant. This is an application and acceptance of proposed conditional use permit to convert a restaurant to a game of chance establishment. This property is located at 14 Gussable Avenue. Has anybody from the Board had a chance to take a look at this application? Want to make a motion as to whether it's ready to take jurisdiction? So a motion by Mr. Hirsch, take jurisdiction of this item. We have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Peterson. Any further discussion by the Board?
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead, Mr. Ballinger.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I, I saw from, from the provided additional comments tonight, it looks like there's some cleanup on site plan items, but I, I guess my, my one question before we accept jurisdiction, there didn't appear, I, I may have missed it, there didn't appear to be any architectural renderings. If, if the applicant wishes to keep the giant moose on, on top of the building, that's, that's fine with me, but I didn't know if there were any actual architectural modifications that would need to be considered by the Board. Again, I, I didn't see them in the packet, and I didn't know if architectural considerations were under discussion tonight. So thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay, maybe Planning Department might have an idea on that?
I'm happy to comment. To, to our knowledge, the architecture is not being modified as part of the proposal, but it may be appropriate to confirm that with the applicant prior to accepting jurisdiction. But, Mr. Ballinger, to my knowledge, there are, there are no exterior modifications or substantial exterior modifications planned as part of the project.
Mr. Chairman, can you hear me? Jerry, Jerry, I'm an attorney, I'm an attorney for the applicant for some reason, or like, I can't get my picture up, but you probably don't want to look at it anyways. There is no exterior changes. The moose is gone. I don't know where it went, but there, there are no exterior changes. The building is what it is. There may be a sign on it, but that's as far as it's going. There are no planned changes. That's why you don't have any architecturals, is because the building is the building.
Got it, thanks. Mr. Ballinger?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just a quick follow-up to that, and I appreciate the clarification. Does that include that there will be no changes to the, I guess, the big sign at the entrance to the Plaza? It looks like it's mostly kind of the big box stores that are, that are highlighted on the sign, Home Depot, Burlington Coat Factory, and Kohl's. Does, does this tenant intend to have a marquee sign on the front entrance?
If, if we don't have, if there's not a sign now for the former restaurant, there's no sign going in on the, on the front marquee. The only thing that we're able to under the lease is have access to other signs that exist now for the former restaurant.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Preunier. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Any further discussion on the jurisdiction? Okay, well, let's go ahead and take a roll vote on taking jurisdiction.
Mike Peterson.
Yes.
Scott Leclerc.
Yes.
Adam Barley.
Yes.
Maggie Harper.
Yes.
Dan Hudson.
Yes.
Ed Weber.
Yes.
Bob Ballinger.
Yes.
Larry Hirsch.
Yes.
That motion passes eight to zero.
Okay, so we've taken jurisdiction. Is there anybody else? I don't know if Mr. Preunier or anybody else wants to speak on behalf of the applicant regarding just any other further information regarding this conditionally special use permit?
Steve Auger will make the presentation.
Got it. Okay, go ahead, Steve.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the Planning Board. For the record, my name is Stephen Auger. I'm a project manager with Hana Swanson, and our office is located at 3 Congress Street here in Nashua. Here before you tonight, representing NHCG LLC. And joining me from that group is Mr. Jim Rafferty, the President and General Manager. Also providing legal counsel for Mr. Rafferty, as, as he just spoke, is Attorney Gerald Preunier of Preunier Enformment. We've come before you seeking a conditional use permit approval for a games of chance facility to occupy the former Bugaboo Creek Restaurant, which has, has been mentioned is located at National Mall. What I'd like to do now, Mr. Chairman, is just quickly screen share my site plan just to orient everyone.
Sure, go ahead.
Okay, so if you look at the plan right here, this, this is the overall master site plan for National Mall. The, the Bugaboo Restaurant is right here where I have my cursor, so, so right off the main drive, and as you, you head straight south, we're located right here, right next to the existing Wendy's Restaurant there. And then the next building right down is, is the Denny's Restaurant. Quickly, just some information about the site. As I mentioned, it's the former Bugaboo Creek Restaurant. That has an address, it's actually 16 Gussable Avenue. And Gussable Avenue is, is a private road. It's actually the main ring road here of the mall. It's located on Lot 2185 Map E. That lot is 10.85 acres in size. It actually has multiple buildings on it, the three restaurants over here. Wendy's, most of the parking here, and then access to Broad Street there. The, the mall is in the GB General Business Zone. Our lot is abutted by the existing National Mall lots to the west right here, such as Kohl's and Christmas Tree Shop and Burlington Coat Factory. To the north, we are abutted by, I believe, a bank, I believe it's Bank of New Hampshire. There's an office building here, and then directly across the street from us on Broad Street is the US Fish Commission right here. East of us is the FBI Everett Turnpike, and directly south of us is the, the Home Depot Facility. Quickly, some background on this. The Bugaboo Creek Restaurant was approved on a site plan. It was approved by the Planning Board back in 2003. The proposed development, it's all internal renovations, so what Mr. Rafferty will be doing is just converting the inside here to to house the games of chance facility where he'll have, I believe, approximately 90 gaming seats, I believe 26 restaurant seats and, and 23 bar seats. And those are, you know, accompanying uses to, to the major use of the, the games of chance facility. The hours of operation for the site will be seven days a week, opening at 11:00 AM and closing at 1:00 AM. Traffic, we hired Stephen G. Perna, traffic engineer from Concord, to perform the traffic impact report threshold worksheet analysis. And there will actually be a significant reduction in traffic to the site during the AM and PM peak during weekdays and during on Saturdays based on the change of use from restaurant to games of chance. Stormwater, as Attorney Preunier mentioned, there are no external changes to the site, so everything is internal. So there's no increase in impervious surfaces, so there will be no downstream effects to, to stormwater. And, and actually quickly, I know Ms. McGee commented in communications about our response letter to Mr. Mendola in the Engineering Department. Some of the, he, he just had a couple of comments, which are, the applicant is, is agreeable to, where we're going to re-stripe a couple of crosswalks. One of them right here, they're a little hard to see because of the scale of the plan, but so right here where my cursor is, it goes across Gussable from the parking spaces here. And then there's another one right here that comes off the main sidewalk and heads up to these parking spaces. We are also going to be adding to our ADA access ramps some detectable warning panels, given that this was constructed, you know, about 17 years ago. That wasn't something that was added on to, to ADA ramps, so we will be upgrading the ramps. We have one right here at this crosswalk, and then another one right here at, at that crosswalk. We are asking for one waiver, Mr. Chairman. It is from Section 190-279B, and that is for bearings and distances on the site. Simply put, when we, we did this plan so many years ago, the surveyor who prepared the boundary, he has since retired. And in order for us to adequately represent the, the boundary on the plan, we'd have to have one of our current surveyors take over the boundary, and that would be at a significant cost to Mr. Rafferty in order for us to stamp it. So what we did is we left a survey stamp off the plan, which we're allowed to do since we aren't showing the bearings and distances. In, in, like I said, this, this, this plan actually acts more like in in accompaniment to the conditional use permit application, so it's more of a display plan than kind of the, the meat and potatoes of the typical site plan that, that we bring before you. So it's more of a display plan than kind of the meat and potatoes of the typical site plan that we bring before you. Next up is the nine points of the conditional use permit application. For the sake of time and the agenda, I'll just take a few minutes and kind of paraphrase and summarize each of the points. The first one, that it's in allowed use in the use matrix table. It is, it falls under item number 210A, games of chance. The second one, if completed, the development in its proposed location will comply with all the requirements of the article in specific conditions for the building and the structure. As I mentioned, really, the only change to this is internal, so the the structure won't change at all. So it fits right in with the site as Warner was constructed back in 2004. Point number three, the building structure and use will not material endanger the public health or safety. There are no processes with this business that would cause any danger to the public health or safety. So we don't believe that's an issue. Number four, the building structure use will not substantially devalue the abutting property. Again, there are no external changes to the site, so it'll look the same as it does today. And the renovations are all internal. Actually, in allowing a games of chance facility will actually enhance the site, we believe. Since 2017, NHCG has donated close to $1.7 million to numerous charities throughout the New Hampshire area. And they did that by raising those funds at their current location, the River Casino and Sports Bar, located at 53 High Street here in Nashua. This will also, adding this additional facility will also allow NHCG to increase the number of charities that they benefit as they'll be able to go out and seek additional charities that they can't fit into the High Street facility now, but they'll be able to incorporate those here, thus increasing the positive impact that they have on the community. Lastly, they will be employing at least 50 employees here to make this function, given that it's seven days a week. And in many of those jobs, pay significant salaries. So again, that's another benefit to the community. And, you know, given what everyone's gone through in the last year, you know, with the struggles of the economy, certainly, you know, jobs are to be welcomed everywhere. Now, point number five, the building structure use will be compatible with the neighborhood and with the abutting and surrounding uses. This isn't allowed use per the land use code, so it does fit in there. It's more of a nightlife use, as Mr. Rafferty has told me, that business tends to pick up a little later in the evening. But again, some of the restaurants here, such as Denny's and Shorty's, you know, I know they have nightlife as well. I believe there's a bar in Shorty's as well. So it does, we believe it fits in well with the neighborhood here and the surrounding uses. Number six, the building structure use will not have a substantial adverse impact on highway or pedestrian safety. Our traffic impact report revealed that since the hours of operation are 11:00 a.m. to 1:00 a.m., neither of those times fall within the morning and evening peak traffic flows. And given the two crosswalks we have, pedestrians can safely walk to and from the building to either get into the building or back to their cars. Number seven, the building structure and use will not have a substantial adverse impact on the natural environmental resources of the city. Again, this is an internal change only, so we don't anticipate any impact on natural environmental resources. Number eight, adequate public utilities and community facilities are available to the property. There are no public expenditures that will be necessary for this site since it's currently serviced by electric, telephone, gas, water, and sewer. And lastly, number nine, that the use of on-street parking, the downtown zone is consistent or compatible with the use. We obviously are not in any of the downtown zone. Now, we believe the site is being developed in a responsible manner in accordance with the National Land Use Code. The recommended conditions noted in Mr. Mandola's letter are agreeable to the applicant, and we respectfully seek your approval. At this time, I'll be glad to answer any questions if anyone has them.
Okay, thanks. Anybody from the board have any questions for the applicant regarding this application? Mr. Weber? You're on mute, Mr. Weber.
Yay. Thank you. First of the crossing, is that going to be high temperature striping or painted?
It is currently paint right now, and I believe Mr. Mandola's comments, they just asked us to repaint it. So that was our intent is to repaint it.
The reason I say high temperature is because it would, after a few years, because of the high traffic in that area, if it would be possible, I'd let Dan comment on this to hopefully we get this to be high temperature. So it does not ever, you know, it's going to last a great deal longer if it's high temperature striping. The hours of operation, I really like that it's in this location. Has the other location had any, to your knowledge, had any extra police duty coming to the site for any problems?
That's something that I'm going to ask Mr. Rafferty to speak to.
I can, Mr. Chairman, again, it's Gerald Prunier. I can say that there have not been any accidents, request for additional police.
Thank you. And also, the last one, is the date April 17th still the same for the comments by Joe Mandola?
That'll be for staff.
I'll let Steve, since he was dealing with Joe.
Yeah.
Are you referring to the date of his letter?
Yes, is it still the April 17th, or do we have, it's actually staff I was gonna?
Yeah, that's.
He's only issued, to the best of my knowledge, he's only issued that one email to us. So if it was dated April 17th, I believe that's the correct date.
Thank you. That's all I have.
All right, anybody else from the board have any questions for the applicant?
Mr. Chair, I just, I'm sorry, I asked Dan to comment on the on the striping.
Sure, I'd be happy to. Dan Hudson, City Engineer. Yeah, the thermoplastic pavement marking does hold up better. As was noted, this is a private road, so the material they choose is up to them, you know, if it's paint or require more maintenance. But if they keep up with the maintenance, paint also works. So it's really up to the applicant of what type they want to use.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Ballander?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. It's more of an administrative question and maybe staff might be able to chime in on this. The language for reference of approval is site plan NRO section 190-133F. And I guess I'm just trying to understand, does that NRO cover the nine approval criteria? Or do we have to treat the nine approval criteria in an analogous way to waiver requests? And I'm just trying to understand if that provision covers the all the all nine criteria for the CUP, basically.
Yes, that covers all criteria for the CUP, a separate item that is required as part of the CUP process.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Scott.
Anything else? Anybody else from the board have any questions for the applicant during the hearing? Okay, seeing none, I'm going to go ahead and open up to the public. If there's anybody in the public wishing to speak in opposition or concerned, have a question of the plan, please go ahead and unmute, state your name and address for the record, and go ahead and talk.
Hi, I'm Bob Heseltine. I'm a board member for the Corpus Christi Food Pantry and Assistance. We're located on Crown Street in Nashua. We provide food and financial assistance for the people in Nashua. Pantry offers meat, vegetables, dairy products, toiletries for our clients. The assistance program provides financial support for rent, utilities, medical, dental, and health issues. We offer this service to over 250 families a month in the city of Nashua. We have been receiving financial help from the River Casino since 2008, when they were in Milford, and they have been our prime contributor. We look forward to receiving increased benefits from the new location. And we thank the River Casino for their support in in our help to help the less fortunate in the city of Nashua. And we hope that the planning board will approve this plan. Thank you.
Great, thanks. Anybody else from the public wishing to speak in opposition or concern? I see a hand. Mr. Morelli, maybe?
Correct.
Go ahead. Just state your name and address for record first, please.
Yeah, I'm Rocky Morelli. I'm the executive director of Opportunity Networks, which I've been for the past 34 years. We're located on 116 Perimeter Road. We have a over 40-year history in the city of Nashua, providing supports and services to individuals with disabilities. We've been a partner with the River Card Room since the charitable gaming was approved in the state of New Hampshire. We've had many projects and many benefits from that partnership. We've raised a significant amount of money to help us with capital improvements and the ability to use the funds in a discretionary manner, which isn't allowed by our state funding. So it's been very helpful in terms of being able to pay for things through our fundraising efforts and put in combination with grants, including our City of Nashua Community Development Block Grants that we've had funded, where some of the items needed additional resources to complete projects. So I have nothing but very positive things to say about the great relationship we've had with them. It's impacted a number of people. We're currently working with about 55 Nashua residents and helping them with employment as well as other independent living type skills. So I'm here to speak, to endorse this plan. I think this location would work well. And I really know from the relationships I have with other organizations in the Nashua area, of which I am a local, born and bred citizen of Nashua, that many people benefit from these funds that are generated through these types of activities that come with the ability for us to be able to really use them where we think it's needed most. So thank you for the opportunity to be here on behalf of representing that.
Okay, thanks a lot. Anybody else wishing to speak opposition, concern, or in favor of the plan? Okay, any hands up?
I do not see any.
All right, I will then take it back to the board. Anybody from the board have any further questions of the applicant before I close the hearing? Mr. Weber?
There we go. Dumpster. I didn't see it on the plan. I just want to know if you had it in closed dumpster, sorry.
Steve Auger, could you comment on that?
I'm honestly not sure if there's a dumpster out there. I'd actually asked Mr. Rafferty what his plans are for trash removal. I don't think it's the same as what they generate with the restaurant.
Sir Rafferty, do you want to speak on that? You're on mute right now. You have to unmute, sorry.
Okay, so you can hear me now?
Yeah, just state your name and address quick for the record, please.
Jim Rafferty, I live at 52 Main Street, apartment 404 Nashua. About the dumpsters, we have an enclosed space behind the facility, kind of barn door place where the dumpster goes. And it's always been in that case, and it's going to continue that to be in the closed dumpster area.
Thank you. I appreciate it. And yeah. Also, is the is a site going to be cleaned up because it's been left, you know, things? And most of the statement was nothing outside of it is going to be. But is there going to be any cleanup on the outside as you do the inside?
Yes, sir. We plan on particularly the the shrubbery around the facility has taken, in the four years of it being not active, it's really gotten kind of beat up. So we have a plan to rework all that, all that land around the facility.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Any further questions by the board of the applicant? Or in the hearing, or staff? Okay, hearing none. I'm going to go ahead and close the hearing, move into the meeting. So we have a conditional special use permit, gone through the nine criteria. Seems like a pretty good use of the building to me. My building's been pretty, been vacant for quite some time. Kind of excited to see something actually happening there, so personally, so. Anybody else have any comments or want to make any, Mr. Weber?
Yes, thank you. I just want to say to the applicant, I really appreciate what they're doing, what they do, their concept and their, and actually what they do to help out the people in Nashua. This is a very big thing that I feel is really necessary. It takes the pressure off of the city. It helps people that really do need this help. And I just want to say thank you, and I'm going to, it's time for this all the way.
Thank you. We appreciate it.
Anybody else on the board have any comments during the meeting here? Okay, anybody want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Go ahead, Mr. Weber.
Yes, new business 821-0070, conditional use permit at 14 Gussabel Ave, unit 16, that it does meet site plan NRO section 190-133F with one waiver request, which 190-279B, which requires bearings and distance from all property lines, is granted. Finding the waiver will not be contrary spirit intended regulation. And prior to the chair, as number two, as written.
Okay, so with that motion by Mr. Weber to approve new business 821-0070, the two stipulations as stated. Do we have a second on that? I think I heard second by Mr. Peterson first. Any further discussion? Okay, let's get a roll vote on that, please.
Mike Peterson?
Yes.
Scott Leclerc?
Yes.
Adam Barley?
Yes.
Maggie Harper?
Yes.
Dan Hudson?
Yes.
Ed Weber?
Yes.
Bob Ballinger?
Yes.
Larry Hirsch?
Yes.
The motion passes eight to zero.
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. All right, moving on with the agenda. Next up, we have new business site plan. It's number 821-0046. This is Pro Hakka Properties LLC. Application and acceptance of proposed 4,800 square foot commercial building, dental and retail, along with associated site improvements. This property is located at 537 Amer Street. So to the board, does anybody have a chance to take a look at this application, want to make a motion as to whether it's ready to take jurisdiction?
So moving, Mr. Chair?
All right, so a motion by Mr. Ballander to take jurisdiction. A second on that?
I'll say it.
Second by Mr. Barley. Any further discussion? Okay, let's get a roll vote on the jurisdiction, please.
Mike Peterson?
Yes.
Scott Leclerc?
Yes.
Adam Barley?
Yes.
Yes.
Maggie Harper?
Yes.
Dan Hudson?
Yes.
Ed Weber?
Yes.
Bob Ballinger?
Yes.
Larry Hirsch?
Yes.
The motion passes eight to zero.
Okay, thanks. So we have jurisdiction now. Somebody from the applicant that wants to present this, go ahead, Mr. Zajak.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board. For the record, my name is Tom Zajak. I'm a civil engineer with Hayner Swanson, three Congress Street here in Nashua, here tonight representing the applicant. Also with me here tonight is is the owner applicant, Dr. Pravina Bot, as well as attorney Brad Skate and Gary Thomas and Scott Cornet from North Point Construction Management. We're here tonight seeking site plan approval to construct a proposed one-story multi-tenant forty-eight hundred square foot commercial building, along with associated site improvements located at five thirty-seven Amherst Street. Mr. Chair, I'd just like to provide a brief presentation, after which we'd be happy to answer any questions from if you don't mind, I'm going to try to share my screen.
Yep, it's up.
A little nervous after last time getting booted out of the meeting.
You're good. You got it.
Thank you. So the the site, here's a a current aerial photo, the site five thirty-seven Amherst Street, located where my cursor is here. Map H Lot six fifty-two. It's about a half acre parcel located in the HB Highway Business Zone. Of course, located along a busy Amherst Street corridor. Our direct abutters include the NTB Tire and Warehouse, which is now known as Mavis Tire and Brakes. That abuts us to the northwest. To the southeast, we've got the Baron Appliance Store where my cursor is here. Of course, we've got Amherst Street that abuts us along the southerly and westerly side of the site. There's a mix of commercial uses across Amherst Street. Lastly, the Amherst Park Apartment Development is located to the rear of the site to the northeast. The existing lot is currently flat and an undeveloped pad site that shares access with the existing adjacent NTB Mavis driveway located right here where my cursor is. So, Mr. Chair, I just thought it'd be important to provide a little bit of background on how this existing lot to be. So I'm going to flip here to an aerial photo from about twenty sixteen, which shows the lot prior to the original NTB Mavis project. So we were involved in that in that project. I think a couple of members of the board were on the board at that time. That project involves the demolition of the existing Nathaniel's Restaurant, as well as the attached auto body shop, as well as the removal of the large areas of pavement, as you see on the plan here. Rather extensive. We then subdivided the lot one into two to create the NTB lot on the northerly or westerly side of the lot, and then the subject parcel undeveloped future pad site to the east and or south. And then we came in for a site plan approval for the NTB project. So I'll flip back to the current aerial photo. The future pad site was set up so we could hop on to the shared access driveway, as I mentioned, located at the unsignalized intersection of Amherst Street and Capitol Street. There's also sewer water drainage and other site utilities that were stubbed to this future development pad to avoid any future cut into Amherst Street. Well, Mr. Chair, attached is the proposed site plan, along with the NTB Mavis site, which is associated with this project. Is proposed, as I mentioned, to to develop the site into a one-story multi-tenant commercial building, forty-eight hundred square feet, along with site improvements. Half of the building, as shown here, about twenty-four hundred feet, would be proposed to be the new home of Dr. Bot's Dental Practice, Advanced Family Dentistry. She currently leases and operates space just up the street at six thirteen Amherst Street. The other half of the building, another twenty-four hundred feet, is allocated for a future commercial tenant. There's no tenant in mind at this time, would be a a future tenant once this building is up and running. Will also contain a full basement, which will provide both users with some storage space, as well as house some of the mechanical equipment associated with dental office. So as I mentioned, Dr. Bot's practice is is advanced family dentistry. So in keeping with her vision for an inviting family dentistry practice, the architectural design prepared by North Point, gable roof lines, a covered front porch with columns, traditional vinyl clapboard siding, accent wall shingles, and extensive stone cladding along the front elevation facing Amherst Street, which is shown in the upper right-hand corner of your screen. There is a waiver request that I will speak to in just a little bit that relates to one piece of the architectural design standards. Back to the site plan and talk a little bit about some of the site improvements. It will contain twenty-six parking spaces, twenty-two parking spaces in the front of the site along Amherst Street, and four spaces in the back of the site, which will be used by employees. Access will be maintained via the existing shared driveway located here. As I mentioned, this driveway was set up as part of the NTB project to service both lots, and it it aligns with Capitol Street and the unsignalized intersection along Amherst Street. When Dr. Bot purchased the property, formal cross-access and utility easements were established and are in place between the two properties. We provided copies of those as part of our site plan application. I do want to mention that a connection is being proposed to the existing driveway stub located in the rear of the Baron's Appliance Store property, located in this in this location here where my cursor is. The purpose of this connection is solely to provide secondary and emergency access as requested by the fire department, and we will be installing signage to indicate that it shall be used for emergency vehicles only. Other site improvements include curving sidewalks, sight lighting, landscaping, utility services, and stormwater management. A project, the traffic's project consultant, Steve Pernod, prepared a traffic impact memo and TIR worksheet with all thresholds well below that which would require a full traffic impact study. From a traffic perspective, it's also important to note that during the NTB approvals that I referenced back in twenty sixteen, the board mentioned their desire to see this future pad site, which is the subject of the current application, be developed with a low intensity traffic user rather than a high-intensity traffic user like a a drive-through, fast-food restaurant or coffee shop. Both of those uses would be allowed in the HB zone, but there was a desire to see a a low a low-traffic user to to try to minimize the amount of traffic that is using this this shared driveway. And so for that reason, we believe the proposed project is a great use for this this underutilized site. From a stormwater perspective, as you know, redevelopment projects such as this provide a great opportunity to significantly improve stormwater management compared to the existing condition, both in terms of quality and quantity. The stormwater management design and study that were submitted builds upon the framework that was established as part of the NTB project. So runoff from the site, including the building and parking lots, will drain into one of two stormwater management practices on site. The first is an existing rain garden colored here in blue that's located between the proposed building and the parking on the NTB lot. The second is a proposed underground infiltration system located in the rear of the site. You can see the outline here. So the combination of these systems will provide, you know, adequate qualitative and quantitative treatment of stormwater during larger runoff events. Any discharge from the site will tie into an existing drainage stub that we left as part of the NTB project, and then is hard-piped to this headwall and riprap area in the back, where it then flows overland into the wetlands behind the site. Our analysis shows that this project, coupled with the stormwater management improvements constructed as part of the NTB project, will will result in a significant improvement in terms of quality and quantity compared with the original Nathaniel's Restaurant site. Mr. Chair, we are seeking three waivers, site plan waivers here tonight. We submitted a waiver letter dated March thirty-first, twenty twenty-one, along with some supporting documentation from attorney Westgate and the North Point team. I'd just like to paraphrase a couple of points in that letter as it applies to these three waivers, and then we as a project team would be happy to follow up as needed if the board has further questions. The first waiver is is a waiver of one ninety-two oh nine F as it relates to providing a formal shared access easement between the subject lot and the adjacent Baron's Appliance Store to the east. We did go back and forth with staff a little bit on this, on whether or not this waiver was was needed. This is the same waiver that was requested and granted as part of the previous NTB project. In that case, it related to providing a a shared connection between the NTB lot and the gas station further to the west. At that time, the city traffic engineer supported the waiver request as there were traffic and circulation concerns as it related to allowing a cross-access and 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 circulation back from the gas station lot to our to our site driveway in that unsignalized intersection. So again, that waiver was granted. A little bit different circumstances here, but we're trying to follow that that same approach as it relates to minimizing traffic volumes at the shared driveway. We certainly understand the value of obtaining the shared access connections and easements along major corridors. We believe the subject property and the NTB lot have already accomplished the spirit of this regulation with the with the use of the shared driveway that's been set up for this project. As shown, the project does connect to an existing driveway stub in the rear of the site. However, as I mentioned, this connection is strictly for emergency access purposes. The last point on the on the shared waiver request, waiver request, is that prior to purchasing the property, those formal cross-access and easements were established between the two property, allowing the the use of the shared driveway by our site and and our our customers. However, the agreement does not give the applicant the ability to that right to a third party in this space, specifically the the Baron's Appliance Store lot. So for those reasons, we are asking the board to waive this requirement. The second and third waiver requests are a little more straightforward. The second is ever from a portion of the architectural design standards for non-presidential buildings, specifically to allow for a portion of the exterior materials to be vinyl siding. The third waiver is from the outdoor lighting design standards to allow for some minor spillover of the lighting levels along the common lot line with with Barons where my cursor is here. It's in an area where we have some very minor spillover. As you can see, there's not much room between the two properties. We have a light pole in fairly close proximity to that common lot line, and we're asking for that waiver in part because the adjacent property contains a very well-lit parking lot, similar use to ours. As I mentioned, Mr. Chair, the justification for these waivers is further outlined in our submitted letter, and we'd be happy to answer questions in more detail if needed. So in summary, we believe the proposed application is complete and complies with the applicable site plan regulations. We believe the proposed project is being redeveloped in a responsible manner and is a great use for a property that has sat vacant for the last couple of years. We have reviewed the staff report and are okay with the suggested conditions of approval. I would respectfully ask the board to consider striking condition number six related to fire department comments. I think it was mentioned in the communications that the Fire Marshal's Office had indicated a final sign-off or comfort with our revision. So if the board is willing to do that, I think we can strike one more condition off the plan. And this completes my formal presentation. Like I said, we'd be happy to answer any questions that you have. Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Tom. Just your clarification, sorry, just to be on the record, the contribution of thirty-eight hundred dollars to the Amherst Street Traffic Corridor account, that's accepted, that's by the applicant?
Correct, yes.
Okay, thanks. Yeah, I don't have any questions on my end. Anybody from the board have any questions, Mr. Varley?
Yeah, thanks, Mr. Chair. I just, I, Mr. Zajak, I just had a question sort of from a design standard in terms of the 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 layout of the lot. I'm wondering, did you give any thought when you were looking at the the site layout to bringing the building, you know, forward to the front of the lot and putting the parking behind? And and the only reason I ask that question is because in connection with, you know, recent discussions around master planning, and particularly on the Amherst Street corridor, you know, there's been discussion around, you know, changes to, you know, zoning and 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 thinking about how we might rethink the Amherst Street corridor, and one of the considerations has been, you know, talking about bringing, you know, bringing buildings to the front of the street, among other things. So I was just curious as to, you know, whether that was something you thought about, whether it would have been feasible on this lot, whether you think there's other restrictions that would prevent you from doing something like that?
Sure, I'd be happy to answer the question. Truthfully, Mr. Varley, the the layout of the building and parking was fairly locked in once the NTB project was constructed. We did, you know, construct this shared driveway and associated parking spaces on their lot. So when we're doing kind of the master planning of the two sites in twenty sixteen, it was kind of always contemplated to have this shared access drive running along the front of the site. So that that piece of the project was was kind of locked in. And we kind of felt that this was, given the location of the NTB driveway, we would be getting very inefficient if we were trying to recirculate traffic in and around the building to try to get parking in the back. So to to answer your question, it was really dictated by the NTB project and and what we had to work with. But it's it's a fair comment, no doubt.
No, understood, and and it does sound like that it was that those prior design features, if you were dealing with this lot, you know, completely new, you maybe that that would be a different consideration. I guess, you know, in part, I was wondering whether you whether you you would view there as being other more more general restrictions, you know, either from a zoning perspective or design perspective that would otherwise, you know, prohibit you from considering that if this were a standalone lot, understanding that's not the case here.
Yeah, I I don't think there was anything specifically from zoning. You know, we did go to zoning for parking within the front yard setback. That Nathaniel's Restaurant, the old the old site, was basically paved up to the right of way. So even though both NTB and this dental office pulled back considerably from where pavement was, you know, we were still within that front yard setback. But this is kind of the layout because of those restrictions, because of the geometry and the lot of the lot in the back, it is kind of angled, the rear lot line. We found this layout to be most efficient for us in terms of parking and access and circulation.
No, appreciate that. Thank you for the explanation.
Any other questions by the board, Mr. Weber?
Thank you. There's a number of trees along the back and the side, very tall trees. I understand there's one has to be removed because of the excess. But are the these trees going to be taken down, or are they going to stay?
So there's a number of trees that are located along this area here, as Weber was talking about, as well as a back by the existing fence. There are mature trees located on our side of the fence, as well as a a very good buffer. If I flip back here, there's a very good buffer located on the on the apartments site. So there are a couple of trees that will have to take that down in the back, and certainly these trees along the side are come down. We're not touching the fence. We're not touching any of the mature trees behind the fence on the adjacent property. I think there's an opportunity, Mr. Weber, to save a couple of those trees along the line. It's certainly close, so we're probably going to make that decision out in the field.
The reason I'm asking is because whenever we have a lot of blacktop, it creates heat, and we try to make sure that the any trees or the plantings that you're actually going to be making in the front, they really do help out to keep this from getting to be a hot surface and and radiate heat up into the atmosphere. That was the first one. And so if it can remain, please remain, if you can. The front sidewalk, it's kind of getting into disrepair. Because you're doing the, you're putting in new new surfaces, would it be possible that you fix the sidewalk that is there currently? It does need to be repaired, and it and it, I was just asking, can you put that in while you're doing the rest of it?
So I'm not sure that that's in the project's budget, so I don't want to So I'm not sure that that's in the project's budget, so I don't want to commit to repairing, you know, two hundred plus feet of sidewalk along our frontage. I do know it's in in varying states. I think there are portions that are in good shape. I do think there's a couple of portions maybe could be repaired. I also know that that this section of Amherst Street is slated or in the in the DOT's ten-year plan, as I understand it.
Okay, no.
The widening and improvements.
If it's gonna be there and gonna be done by the city, don't consider it. I mean, I wouldn't have you even wasting the money if it's gonna be putting, you know, because I know what you're talking about.
I can't speak to the exact timing on that, perhaps.
Dan.
Engineer Hudson could could weigh in exactly.
Okay, the last one I have is the rear lighting. It splashes onto the rear of the adjacent property, according to your plans. Would it be possible a block plate? There's there's plates that can be put on lighting so that they don't spill out onto the adjacent property, not to the side, just to the back, is all I see, onto people, other people's property. They would, you know, see this and get it splashed into their, maybe maybe not because of the trees, but I'm just throwing that out there.
Yeah, we can. We can certainly commit to putting, you can see on the plan, there's one light pole in the back rear area. And we can certainly commit to putting a a shield on that so that all the light towards the rear of the site is shielded towards the site.
Thank you. That's all I have.
Like I said, any other questions by the board?
And you, I'm sorry, can you ask Dan to hone in on that question about the sidewalk being sure, part of the new plan for the Amherst Street?
Sure, I can confirm that there are future plans, the wide Amherst Street, so that area will probably be affected. I don't have specific timing on that. It is in the ten-year plan. They'll start with the design process and then go through construction. So it'll be some time before that actually comes to construction, but but it is in the plans to do work there.
Okay, thank you. I just, that means I I wouldn't have, I wouldn't request that that they really do put that work effort and spend the extra money when it's gonna happen in the city. Thank you.
Other questions by the board for the applicant, Mr. Ballinger?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Are there are there any proposed signs for the for the business facing Amherst Street? I think the former auto body shop had a big sign. I think when the site was formally branded NTB, they had a pretty big sign out there. I just didn't know if if there were any additional signs to be posted on Amherst Street. I just didn't see them in the architecturals that were submitted, if if there were.
Or you're correct, Mr. Ballinger. So there is one wall sign associated with the dentistry practice that's located on the building that's shown on the elevations. You're also correct that there's a fairly, there's an existing sign located where my cursor is here at the southerly corner near the Barron's Lot. I believe the intent is to is to repurpose and reuse that sign for this lot.
Thank you, and I I guess the follow-up to that would be is is any review of that plan necessary, or is that considered an administrative item by staff at that point? I I guess, my guess would be you're not gonna make it, you know, neon red, but I I guess there would traditionally be an architectural review process that that accompanies that. So I guess I would just want to make sure that it's, you know, fitting per per existing ordinance, if there's any upgrades to 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 that sign or if it intends to be repurposed.
I'll defer to staff there. My understanding is there's a separate permit process for for the signage itself that would be reviewed by the city.
Yes, Mr. Ballinger, the the sign permit application would be an administrative review process. In the event that the sign is is non-compliant, that would require some relief through the zoning board, but that that is handled independently. Really, the location is, you know, jurisdictionally, the focus of the planning board and any other dimensional requirements and design requirements would fall to the administrative review process.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just just one additional question. I guess with 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 regard to the the lack of easement to the Barron's property, was was that seen as a hardship? I I guess I'm just not understanding why that wouldn't be formalized, even if it is intended to be emergency access only. And if it is intended to be emergency access only, would there be any benefit to putting some sort of barricade there? I I guess I'm just not sure why that wouldn't be formalized.
So, Mr. Ballinger, I can speak to your second point, which is we did propose as part of the plan review process a gate there. And the fire department or fire marshal did not want that, so we did propose a barrier there and so we're we're stuck with some signage and some policing.
Just one quick follow-up that was was Barron's amenable to an easement or was that option not not pursued? I'm just trying to to understand if there's going to be a prickly situation between neighbors and and whether or not it it would have been worthwhile to pursue the easement option further.
I'm not an attorney. We have on the call, let me try to answer that question as an engineer. It's it's, so the way that shared access regulation kind of reads is it's as almost if these parcels are being developed all at the same time, and we kind of have the ability to, you know, design them all to to line up perfectly. And so Barron's being developed first, I believe it was the two thousands. They provided that driveway stub. There is an easement there that exists, but it's conditioned on providing a reciprocal easement by our site. So in terms of the shared access piece, as I mentioned, there is an existing shared access between lot eighty-eight, which is NTB or Mavis, and our site lot six fifty-two. It just doesn't allow a third party to hop on to that. And so in requiring that, we would have to go back to that property owner to to amend that easement to allow it in terms of that shared access through the site. You know, we we feel that we're meeting the spirit and intent of the ordinance in terms of these two sites working together to get to the the shared access. We're sensitive to the discussions that were had with the board when this lot was created, when this development pad was created in terms of minimizing the use. I know Barron's has, you know, their own access out out to Amherst Street and can access the Capitol Street intersection should they choose from their driveway. But it not only opens up this site and that driveway to the current use, but also, you know, any future use on that lot in the HB zone. So I probably I probably gave you too much of an answer. I see Brad turned on his video. Brad, if you want to jump in as well, if I missed something there.
If I may, Mr. Chairman.
Sure, go ahead.
Hope you all, I've unmuted. Hope you all hear me.
Yeah, okay.
Thank you. So Brad Westgate, lawyer, the Weiner Bennett in Nashville, one eleven Concord Street, representing the applicant owner. Tom did frankly address the various considerations that we gave thought to in the easement, cross-easement question, shared access question. If you go back to two thousand sixteen, as Tom indicated, the goal for the present site, lot six fifty-two, was to have a low-impact type of use. This fits that bill very nicely. The, really, the setting for this for these two properties was really established at that timeframe because, in a way, if you take a look at the ordinance for which we're seeking the variance, it's the ordinance focus is not just on shared access, but also on minimization of curb cuts and driveway design, sort of equally important to the notion of shared access. And there's this board and the applicant in two thousand sixteen, and Hainer Swanson did a wonderful job creating this pair of lots with the one shared access, essentially where the Nathaniel's access was across Capitol Street, and contemplated these kind of uses that were really compatible, if you think through the low-intensity use of this site. And also, as Tom indicated, both of the properties, Barron's and these this pair, do have adequate access presently. There's really no need for it. And the, as you note, the Barron's curb cut was in the rear. These properties were designed with the curb cut, the shared access between them in the front. And really, you do is just frankly traipse unnecessary traffic through one to the other for really a nominal meaning. And just lastly, as Tom also indicated, it's very difficult, I think, to 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 meet the spirit of this ordinance in imposing shared access when you're working with the redevelopment of small sites as opposed to sort of virgin development on larger sites. And frankly, it's more needed in larger site development that's new and a non-redevelopment than it is in a smaller type arrangement as this. So those were all the factors in our mind. And I I do indicate, lastly, that the easement that was created for these two lots was established for the purpose of shared access between these two lots to sort of meet the two thousand sixteen approval.
Any follow-on, Mr. Ballinger?
I know. Thank, thank you. Thank you, Attorney Westgate. Thank you, Mr. Zajak, and thank you, Mr. Chair.
Any other questions by the board for the applicant? Okay, hearing none, I will go ahead and open this hearing to the public. If there's anybody in the public that wishes to speak in opposition or concern, have a question of this plan, just go ahead and unmute, state your name and address for record, and go ahead and make your comment. Okay, I'm not hearing any. Last chance for the board. Any questions for the applicant or staff during the hearing? Okay, hearing none. I'm going to go ahead and close the hearing, move into the meeting. So taking a look at what we have in front of us, sort of an extension of an earlier kind of small master plan that we, the board has seen before. Looks like a good use of the site myself. We did have a couple of waivers in here. The architectural waiver seems pretty pretty benign and pretty common for commercial sites, the lighting waiver. We did hear Mr. Zajak indicate that they would take care of any light spillover to the rear of the site. So now we're really, I guess, whether anybody wants to make that waiver more specific to the, I'll call it, you know, Barron's site, you could do that if you feel like you need to. For staff, is 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 the applicant correct? Item number six is really not necessary anymore. Yeah, okay, so that could be removed. So that's all I've got. Anybody else have any comments, Mr. Hudson?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I would note that, I believe, there's April ninth comments from Joe Mandola, which I don't know if the board has has had an opportunity to review, but they were, there was an update issue, I believe.
That's the date of the.
Yeah, April ninth, twenty twenty-one. Latest issue comments date from Mr. Mandola.
So stipulation number five is April ninth, okay. Thanks. Any other comments by the board? Anybody want to make a motion? Mr. Varley?
Yeah, I'll make a motion. So I'd make a motion to approve new business site plan, case number A twenty-one dash zero zero four six. And that motion for approval would be with the finding that the the plan does meet the requirements outlined in Site Plan NRO, section one ninety dash one forty-six D. And there will be a total, there's a total of, sorry, seven, or sorry, eight stipulations. The first three of those stipulations are all waiver requests, and all three will read is granted, will not be contrary to the spirit and intent of the regulation. Number four and five, I'm sorry, number forty, read as written in the staff report. Stipulation number five, to be amended to replace the the current date in reference to the email from Joe Mandola with the date of April ninth, twenty twenty-one. Current stipulation number six, to be removed. Current stipulations, number seven, eight, and nine, as written in the staff report and renumbered accordingly.
Thank you, Mr. Varley. So there's a motion to approve with the eight stipulations as indicated by Mr. Varley. Do we have a second on that?
Second, Mr. Chair.
Second, my Mr. Ballinger. Any further discussion? Okay, let's get a roll vote on that, please.
Mike Peterson?
Yes.
Scott LeClaire?
Yes.
Adam Marley?
Yes.
Maggie Harper?
Yes.
Dan Hudson?
Yes.
Ed Weber?
Yes.
Ballinger?
Yes.
Barry Hirsch?
Yes.
That motion passes eight to zero.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you very much. Okay. All right, moving on with the agenda. Next up, new business site plan. This is case number eight twenty-one dash zero zero four seven. This is First Church of Christ Scientist of Nashville, owner of Crimson Properties LLC, applicant. Application and acceptance of proposed site plan to show a twelve-unit senior residential development and associated site improvements as property is looking at one fifteen Concord Street. So first for the board, is anybody a chance to take a look at this application and want to make a motion as to whether or not it's ready for us to take jurisdiction?
Weber, so moved.
There are motion by Mr. Weber to take jurisdiction. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Peterson. Any further discussion? Okay, can we get a roll vote on that, please?
Mike Peterson?
Yes.
Scott LeClaire?
Yes.
Adam Marley?
Yes.
Maggie Harper?
Yes.
Dan Hudson?
Yes.
Ed Weber?
Yes.
Bob Ballinger?
Yes.
Barry Hirsch?
Yes.
That motion passes eight to zero.
Okay, so we have jurisdiction. All right, anybody from the applicant want to present this case? Mr. Zajak?
Yes, Mr. Chair. Again, Tom Zajak, little engineer with Hainer Swanson, three Congress Street in Nashville, representing the applicant. Also with me here tonight is Randy Turmell of Crimson Properties, the applicant, as well as Attorney Morgan Hollis. We're tonight seeking the site plan approval to redevelop the existing one fifteen Concord Street property into a proposed twelve-unit housing for older persons development to be known as Covington Place. Before I proceed with my presentation, Mr. Chair, I do want to mention that we did receive a number of letters of support submitted. Hopefully made their way into your packets. We also received letters of opposition or concern about various aspects of the project, including how we meet the housing for older person requirements, traffic, stormwater, architectural, other other site plan elements. So we will be addressing these items in our presentation. Some of those concerns, and after which we'd be happy to answer follow-up questions from the board or public.
Okay, thanks.
Everybody see that, okay?
Yeah, okay.
Okay, so as I mentioned, the application before you is a redevelopment of one fifteen Concord, located in the middle of this aerial photo here. It's map forty-eight, lot forty-nine. It's about one point seven four acres located in the RA residential zone. Our direct abutters, we've got Concord Street and a church to the west located at one ten Concord Street. We've got a number of single-family residents that abut us to the northwest, the north, the east along Bates Drive, as well as in a butter, not directly, but at one oh nine Concord Street. There's also a commercial use that directly abuts us to the south law office. And the site is located, as you can see, about two hundred feet from the northerly edge of Greeley Park. It's important to note that this general area north of of Greeley Park contains a mix of existing uses, including churches, single-family residences, duplex and multifamily residences, as well as a convenience store, a florist shop, and a law office. So it is, it is a rather mixed-use section, this section from Greeley Park up to up to Henry Burke. Uh, this section from Greeley Park up to, up to Henry Burke Highway. I'll flip to our, uh, existing conditions plan, the property is owned and operated, uh, by the First Church of Christ Scientist Nashua. Uh, the existing site contains a one story, approximately five thousand square foot church building, uh, located in the center of the site here. Along with associated site improvements, the existing site contains, uh, thirty two parking spaces. Access is provided via a single driveway and curb cut off of, uh, Concord Street. Uh, located at the southerly end of its frontage on Concord Street. Uh, there is existing sidewalk located, uh, along this section of Concord Street on, on both sides. Uh, as you can see, uh, Mr. Chair, the development, the existing development is really concentrated in the front half of, of the site, uh, the rear portion of the site is, is mostly wooded. Uh, the topography of the site is unique, uh, along the site's frontage on Concord Street. I'm gonna move from north to south or, or left to right on your screen. Uh, the grades in the roadway are, are, are very flat, about one percent. Until we get to about this location here where our driveway is, uh, and then they, they steepen up to about the three or four percent range, which still is is a, is a moderate slope, uh, heading down south towards, towards Greeley Park. The existing, uh, church and parking lot sit down about six to, to ten feet from Concord Street. Uh, and there are steep slopes in the rear of the site here, you can see our contours, working our way from the back of the church down to the back of the single family residences off of Bates Drive. And those steep slopes, uh, range, uh, anywhere from, uh, two to one slope to a six to one slope, it kind of varies back there. Uh, the overall elevation change, uh, from Concord Street down to Bates Drive is about thirty feet. Soil maps and test bits indicate well drained sandy soils throughout the site. Uh, there are no wetland or wetland buffers present that would affect the project. Uh, the, the existing building is currently serviced by public sewer, water by Penetra Water Works. Uh, underground gas, underground electric and telecommunications utilities. Uh, it is also worth noting that this section of Concord Street, uh, was paved in November of twenty eighteen and is therefore under moratorium until, uh, twenty twenty three. So I've just brought up the stream, the proposed site plan, we're proposing to redevelop the site, uh, by demolishing the existing church, uh, building along with its associated parking lot and constructing a new twelve unit residential development to be known as Covington Place. Uh, it's important to note that, uh, housing for older persons, uh, residential uses are allowed by right in the RA zone. Uh, and that would include, uh, single family, uh, type development, uh, two family or duplexes as well as, uh, multifamily use, uh, as we're proposing here tonight. Uh, the design of this project, including the building and parking layout, uh, is based on careful consideration of, of the site constraints. Working with the topography of the site, uh, as well as avoiding any impacts to the newly paved Concord Street. Uh, we're also improving drainage and stormwater management and, and maybe most importantly, we're concentrating the development in the front portion of the site as to minimize impacts to the existing tree buffer i- in the rear portion of the site. The proposed project will contain three buildings, uh, there's a ten unit townhouse style building located in the central portion of the site. Uh, it's one story of living, uh, with a walkout basement in the back. Uh, there's one garage space and one, uh, driveway space, uh, per unit. There's also a two, uh, a, uh, two unit townhouse style building in the, uh, northwest portion of the site tucked up towards Concord Street. Uh, that is one story of living with a drive under garage and a walkout basement. Uh, two garage spaces per unit for units eleven and twelve. There's also a small clubhouse building, uh, located near the existing driveway off of Concord Street. That's a single story building to be used a- as common area by all unit owners. The project will maintain its access, uh, to Concord Street via the existing, uh, driveway curb cut. The curb cut is about twenty three feet wide, uh, at its throat here at this, at this, uh, entrance of the site. Uh, we are proposing to widen that by a foot to get to twenty four feet. So we're fully compliant with the minimum driveway width for the site plan regulations. Uh, we have a central drive aisle which will serve all, uh, of our units, our driveways and our parking areas. Uh, the fire department has, uh, as typically the case requested that this really private driveway, uh, be named as a private way and that'll be known as, as Sutton Way, that's more for uh, E nine one one requirements and, and fire department requirements as it relates to addressing. Uh, parking, as I mentioned, each unit will contain two parking spaces, either via garage or driveway spaces. There are ten additional surface parking spaces, uh, required, uh, being provided, excuse me. There are three parking spaces, uh, located between the clubhouse building and the duplex building, including one ADA accessible space uh, for the clubhouse building. There are also, also seven parking spaces, uh, located along our common lot line with lot forty seven, which is uh, the law office, uh, uh, abutting our lot. Um, and these are gonna be shared parking spaces, uh, between these two sites. I should mention there is an existing, uh, shared parking agreement that has been in place, uh, since the eighties between the existing church and this lot and, and the law office. Uh, our, our client is working closely, uh, with the, uh, lot forty seven property owner in revising, formally revising that, uh, that shared parking agreement. And, uh, certainly they're on board with, with us providing these seven parking spaces uh, along with minor, some minor grading in, in a, in a five foot wide green strip upon their, their lot, so those seven parking spaces have been uh, well coordinated, uh, so that leaves us with a total of thirty four parking spaces on site. Uh, we do need to ask for a waiver as we do exceed the maximum parking, uh, as calculated, including garage and driveway spaces. Additional site improvements include new curbing sidewalks, retaining walls, signage, sight lighting, landscaping, utility services and stormwater management. As I mentioned, Mr. Chair, careful consideration has been made, uh, during the design of this project regarding the architectural design, grading, landscaping, uh, to really protect, uh, and enhance uh, both the view shed from Concord Street as well as, uh, protect the view shed and the existing buffer as best possible, uh, from the single family residents off of Bates Drive. Uh, the building design incorporates traditional New England architecture, including gabled roof lines, vinyl clapboard siding and, and exterior stone cladding. Uh, the grading of the redevelopment site has been designed to fit into the topography, similar to the existing church development. Uh, similar to the existing development, a central drive aisle will be provided along with parking, uh, that will sit down about six feet from Concord Street. Uh, both the two and the ten use residential buildings, uh, will, uh, have a low profile, uh, one story uh, ranch type home look, uh, from Concord Street again, uh, by providing those walkout basements and garages and, and fitting those buildings into the topography as we've done. Um, we have submitted a number of renderings and perspectives as part of our site plan application to demonstrate uh, how the buildings will look from Concord Street, Bates Drive and internal to the site. And I'd just like to flip through a couple of those now. Uh, this is the perspective, there's five total, this is looking, uh, in a, uh, from the northerly portion of our Concord Street frontage, looking back towards the, the duplex building. So again, uh, from Concord Street, uh, you've got one story of living and of course in the back there's gonna be a, a, a walkout, uh, garage, uh, in, in that location, but again low profile ranch, ranch style look from Concord Street. This is looking directly across from the, from the middle of the site, again, from Concord Street. Basically, the view from, from the, uh, abutting church property across the street. We do have, uh, some retaining walls, uh, uh, stone retaining walls to match the, uh, materials being used on the building. Again, some pretty heavy landscaping in the front portion of the site, we've got a very good buffer along Concord Street. Uh, where we're able to provide some landscaping at that higher elevation, uh, that will help, uh, screen the lower portions of the site. This would be a view from, uh, the abutting, uh, law office to our south, looking back through the site. You can see shared, uh, parking spaces, this just kind of gives you a feel of, of the architecture and the look, uh, inside the site again. Uh, that lower level, you're gonna be seeing one, one story of living, uh, with the walkout basement on the backside of the property. This is from our shared, our common driveway in the central portion of the site. Looking back on the lower level, the garage level of the duplex buildings, again, you've got one story of living, uh, with, uh, uh, really a lower level or, 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 uh, lower level garage, uh, for both of those, both of those units. Last, we wanted to provide a perspective from down off of Bates Drive, this was taken, uh, from the rear property of one of the Bates Drive, uh, residences, uh, you can see looking back up at the hill, basically we we took a, uh, or I didn't, the, uh, the designer took a, a, and it superimposed the, the design of, and the, uh, the rendering of the rear of the ten unit building, so again, from these, uh, uh, butters on, on, on Bates Drive when they're looking out the back of their lot, they're really seeing what they see today. The church is a one story building that's kind of exposed to two stories on the backside and that's what they're seeing here, the one story of living. With the walkout basements. So those are the architectural perspectives, I, I do, Mr. Chair, I want to talk, touch upon a couple of other, uh, key project elements that may have come up. Uh, in some of the, uh, the letters we received from some of the neighbors. Um, some of the letters, uh, we're talking about traffic and site distance, so I'd like to try to answer some of the questions there. Um, the traffic consultant, Stephen Pernon, prepared a traffic impact memo, uh, dated February twenty second, twenty twenty one, which was submitted as part of the site plan application and reviewed, uh, by the city traffic engineer. The memo includes a trip generation analysis for the proposed twelve unit age restricted project. Uh, NHDOT traffic counts, uh, pre-COVID, uh, show that the annual traffic volumes along this section of Concord Street carried about eleven thousand vehicles per day. Expected, uh, the weekday traffic volumes, uh, along this corridor peak, uh, in both the morning, uh, between seven and eight uh, AM or nine to, uh, eight to nine AM, a- as well as in the evening, uh, four to five AM or five to six PM again. Very standard for a high volume road like this in terms of the early morning and evening commutes. Uh, based on ITE manual criteria, the proposed development will generate approximately, uh, forty four vehicle trips during a typical weekday, a twenty four hour period, that would be twenty two arrivals and twenty two departures. During peak hour periods, as I mentioned, those, uh, early morning and, and late afternoon windows. Uh, the proposed development will generate approximately two trips in the AM peak hour and five trips in the PM peak hour, again, this is based on the ITE manual criteria, uh, for this type of age restricted housing. Probably the analysis does not include any allocation for the existing church use, uh, or traffic. And, and I say that conservatively because there are high numbers that are generated there. You would likely see those on the weekend as opposed to during the weekdays, uh, but I did want to bring that up, that we did not take any credit. Even though this is a redevelopment site for those existing church trips. In addition to the trip generation analysis, the traffic consultant performed, uh, a site distance analysis at the existing site driveway, again. We are maintaining that existing site driveway. Uh, available site distances looking, uh, both right, which would be northbound or left, which would be southbound. Exceed the minimum distances recommended by ASHTO for both the posted speed limit of thirty miles per hour and the design speed of forty miles per hour. Uh, this, this analysis was, was of course submitted, uh, to the city traffic engineer, uh, and to city staff and we did not receive any review comments or concerns, uh, with our approach as it relates to the traffic, uh, generation analysis and or the site distance analysis. Uh, I'd like to talk about, uh, stormwater management, we prepared a detailed stormwater design and study that was included as part of the site plan application. Currently, the site has, has really two main drainage patterns. Um, the first, the majority of the site, including large portions of the existing building and, and rooftop area. Uh, drain in an easterly direction, uh, just down the hill towards these residents off of Bates Drive. There are two leaching catch basins located in, in this portion where my cursor is of the parking lot. However, i- it's our experiences with, with, uh, catch basins like this, that they're likely only effective uh, for very small storm events, especially given the amount of, of runoff that are likely getting to those leaching catch basins. And we, we suspect that those catch basins, uh, would be quickly overwhelmed by the design storm events that, that we have to analyze sites by. So there's some good opportunity there to, to really, uh, help with the large amount of runoff that's currently draining down the hill towards the Bates Drive residences. Um, secondly, the southwesterly portion of the site, including the existing site driveway, uh, drain to an existing catch basin which is just hard piped back out to the, the Concord Street drainage system, uh, with of course no treatment. Um, so, uh, as I've mentioned before, redevelopment projects such as this, they really provide a great opportunity to improve, improve things from a stormwater perspective, both in terms of quality and, and quantity. Um, so stormwater runoff generated by the proposed redevelopment will be captured via curbing, catch basins and roof drains and piped, uh, to one of two stormwater management practices, subsurf, subsurface. Uh, stormwater management A, uh, is a subsurface infiltration system located within the parking, the front parking area in the central portion of the site, uh, this system has been sized to fully store and infiltrate up to the ten year storm. With an overflow connection, uh, back out to the existing drainage system in Concord Street. Again, we're not, we're not, uh, impacting anything with Concord Street, we're tying into that existing drain line on site, so there'll be no impact to, to Concord Street. Uh, the second practice, stormwater management B, is a subsurface infiltration system located to the rear of the ten unit building, so behind this ten unit building, there's about a twenty foot flat slope, uh, area uh, that we're providing, uh, for a little bit of, of backyard and walkout area and, and lawn area for these residents to enjoy. And underneath that, we're proposing a, a, a large stormwater system, a leaching pipe that really spans the entire length of the building and picks up roof drain leaders that will service the back half of these rooftops. Truthfully, we, we probably could have got away with in terms of the numbers, uh, there, as I mentioned, there was a large pre-development flow contributing down the hill, we probably could have got away with meeting the regulations without providing any uh, qualitative treatment for that rear runoff, we didn't feel that was right. Uh, we felt like we could, we could install a system back there, uh, that would really improve that existing drainage system, so that drainage system, which again picks up the back half of the rooftops, uh, has been sized to fully store and infiltrate, uh, up to the hundred year storm event. And, and our analysis shows that the net result of stormwater, uh, leaving the site as a result of our improvements uh, is, is either equal to or vastly improves, uh, the existing condition. Uh, therefore, you know, our opinion is that we are certainly fully compliant with the city of Nashville stormwater regulations for redevelopment sites. Uh, the next, uh, topic I'd like to talk about, Mr. Chair, just very quickly, i- is the bus stop. Um, so the applicant proact, reached out to, uh, city transit department in order to explore the feasibility of adding a new bus stop and shelter along the site's frontage on Concord Street. Uh, the idea being that if that was feasible, uh, from a cost and design and a permitting perspective that the applicant would construct, uh, this improvement as part of, as part of the project. Since that time, uh, the project team, including myself, has continued to work with city transit and planning staff, and we thank them for that on numerous design and costs, construction cost considerations. And I'll be note that the, constructing the bus stop is not a site plan requirement, you know, I believe that both the city uh, and the city staff and the project team that agree, again, if feasible, that such an improvement would be uh, a great benefit, not only to the future residents of this development, uh, but also the general public in the area. Um, as I mentioned, Mr. Chair, lot forty seven, we are, uh, proposing some shared parking with them. Um, there was an easement, as I mentioned, existing easement from the ladies to mutually benefit both properties. It had to do with both parking and, 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 uh, winter maintenance. Uh, at that time, the minimum parking requirements for professional office uses were much higher than they are on the current code. Uh, they were, uh, about, I think, one, one space per three hundred fifty square feet. Uh, they're currently one space per thousand, so the applicant is working with the lot forty seven property owner to amend the easement to incorporate the proposed seven shared parking spaces as shown on the current site. As I mentioned, there will be some minor grading needed to accomplish this, uh, they've agreed to that and are well aware of that requirement and that need. Lastly, as noted in the staff report, the planning staff has determined that a formal site plan amendment will be needed for Lot 47 to update the parking calculations. I believe that application has been submitted or, or will be in the, in the short-term period. And we are certainly comfortable with the language in the, in the suggested condition of approval that such site plan amendment for 111 Concord Street be approved prior to the issuance of certificate of occupancy for this project. Mr. Chair, before I get into the, the waiver request, I, I would like to turn things over to attorney Morgan Hollis to review how the project applies with the housing for older person, a section of the, the land use code.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board. My name is Morgan Hollis. I'm an attorney with Goddess Men and Hollis at 39 East Pearl Street in Nashua. And as I believe you may have all received, there was a narrative submitted with the application because this project falls under the land use code, section 190-42, dealing with housing for older persons. The first point that I want to make is I think that provides a summary of how it complies. But at the risk of being duplicative, I'm, I'm just going to touch base on each of the points. How it qualifies, first of all, and then second of all, how it meets the standards. So in section, land use code, section 190-42, 42B is the section which describes where housing for older persons are permitted. And they talk about 55 and up housing, but there are actually two different criterias. One, for those homes which are 55 and up only restricted and those that are 62 and up restricted. And there's a significant difference and the planning board has always treated them differently because of the age differential and the requirements. 55 and up, for example, does not require that everyone who lives there is 55. It requires that one person be 55. 62 and up requires that all people live there must be 62 and up. So it's a, it's a different group of people living there, owning there or renting there, whatever the case may be, and different requirements. So let's first discuss how this qualifies. Under section 190-42B, number one, as Tom indicated, provides that multifamily housing for older persons is permitted as a matter of right in this zoning district. So we know we start there. We also know that clearly under the same section, more than one structure per lot is allowed. So we have multiple structures on this property. The second criteria is that dwelling units, in order to qualify for this particular section, the dwelling units must be less than 1,000 square feet. And that's what's been designed here. So they're, they're smaller units purposely. They're closely connected and they're a certain type of housing for 62 and up. The second, the, the third criteria is that the projects can be 30 units or more, but there is a exception to that requirement, allowing 10 units or more if in fact, the project is on a redevelopment site containing non-residential use and no site plan has been applied for or received in five years. And that would be the case here. We have a site which is a redevelopment site. It is a non-residential use in a residential neighborhood. It is a non-conforming use in terms of the building, the area and the use. While it's conforming because it's a church, is not a typical residential use. So when we look at the criteria, there's been no application in five years and we have a redevelopment project, so we're allowed to have 10 units. Has to be more than 10. We're, we're doing 10 or more, which is 12 units plus the clubhouse building. And finally, in order to qualify, you have to have a common area and the common area has to be 25 square feet per unit. And that really isn't much. We have a lot of common area in this particular property. We have common area to the rear of the buildings. And more importantly, we have a clubhouse, which in and of itself is 480 square feet. So it exceeds the 25 square foot per unit or 300 square foot requirements. So on all of the standards to qualify, this project qualifies. The next thing that has to happen in order for you to approve elderly housing is you have to determine whether it meets the standards. And the standards are under section C of that same section, subsection C. And what's important is when you read subsection C, it starts off with number one, which says, the planning board shall approve. That is, it shall, it doesn't say may, it shall approve a site plan if it complies with the standards. And then it goes on through a series of listing of the standards. We have to first demonstrate how the proposed development complies with the provisions of 40, section 42 and all the laws and regulations with regard to elderly housing. I know you've seen elderly housing or housing for older persons and number of projects, and I've been involved in a number of the projects that have come before the board. And we're going to make sure that it is restricted housing by virtue of incorporating the statutory and federal requirements within the condominium documents. This is proposed to be a condominium, so it'll be within the condominium documents. It can't be erased. Whenever you buy a unit, you will see it right in the condominium documents. It'll also be referenced in the deeds. So those restrictions and regulations, which are oftentimes debated, how you make sure the public understands this is a 62, age 62 and up development will be right in the declaration of condominium. It will include the requirement that it be 100% occupied by 62 and up, age 62 and up, and the guests only are allowed two months. And at all times, there must be someone age 62 and up residing in the unit. The buyers also will execute an affidavit at closing, and that will be in the condominium documents. Finally, the services will be covered within the condominium documents. That is, there will always have to be a clubhouse. The clubhouse will be there for programs designed for the social life of those that are age 62 and up. The clubhouse has, within the design of the clubhouse, has a kitchen area, a large open area for gatherings and social activities. It has a exercise room designed with exercise equipment and it has a, a modest studio workout area for fitness. In this case, each of those elements will be incorporated within the condominium declaration. So it just can't be changed at whim. It will provide those valuable services to those people that are 62 and up in age. Also, there is a dedicated improved and seating area outside of the clubhouse area. And while it's small and modest, it's appropriate and meets the requirements and the criteria. So those elements will all be incorporated within the condominium documents. The next criteria is to qualify for housing for 55 years or older and obtain the density regulations. You have to comply with certain of the requirements of significant facilities and services, to the extent they may be required in section C3. And they list among those significant facilities and services, programs designed to provide social life. We've checked that box with clubhouse. Programs designed to have continuing education. That will really be up to the board of directors of the association. And if this board felt so compelled, you could condition approval on that, that monthly programs for continuing education and information and counseling services will be the responsibility of the board of directors going forward. The information and counseling services can be provided right in this facility. We also have to provide recreational programs, which as I mentioned, in the condominium documents, it'll be stipulated that the exercise equipment will be there and there will be a fitness room. So that is required and that will be met. Homemaker's Services is one that is not going to be provided. It's just a suggestion, it's all the types of services that might go there. This is not that type of facility. You might see this in a more congregate or more intensely developed facility, but this is simply 10 units in a building and two units in another building. It is independent living. Finally, we're going to need to have services to assist residents with the upkeep of the grounds. That service is built into the condominium. If you know of condominium life, that there are those who love it and those who don't. But it, one thing it does do is take care of the maintenance. As you get older, the last thing you want to be thinking about many a day, and I can speak from personal experiences, continuing to mow and maintain and landscape. With this type of living, we are providing that service and it will be in the documents. You also must provide accessible physical environment. And as mentioned by Tom, there are ADA compatible parking space outside of the clubhouse. This drive-in and parking area is all on one level. We're putting in a new sidewalk, which will run in a east-west direction perpendicular to Concord Street, as shown on this plan, adjacent to the driveway, so that full access to the sidewalk, which will grant access to the amenities of Greeley Park, access going north to the amenity of the convenience store. All of that will be accessible to handicap due to the already existing sidewalk and the proposed sidewalks. The entry level to these units will be at ground level for the 10 units. And of course, the two units that are closest to Concord Street will not be at ground level, but do have sidewalk access going out to Concord Street. It must be provided or should be provided some emergency and preventive healthcare programs. Again, this is one we're not specifically designating, but because the facility is there, it would be very easy to bring onsite periodic healthcare programs which would address this. This is not one we're mandating, but it is available because of the clubhouse. Congregate dining is a suggested other amenity and we're not providing that. Again, this is independent living. Transportation to facilitate access to social services. Tom touched on the discussions that the applicant has had with the city. We're very optimistic, but it remains to be seen how it gets worked out as it will be in the city right of way. It's really sort of under the control of the city. And we just haven't advanced far enough to come to a final conclusion. There are bus stops already nearby. There's one just south of this site, south of the law firm offices. It's well-marked, easily accessible by the sidewalk. But we would like to try to get a new bus stop up at this area as it would allow increased access to amenities, including a direct stop into the senior center downtown, as well as all of the mainstream access. Referral services is another suggested service to be provided. Again, postings within the clubhouse, that will be available. And that will be included in the condominium documents, that there will be a information board remaining onsite at the clubhouse to allow referral services to be posted. And then the final suggested service or facility is services designed to encourage and assist residents to use the services and facilities that are available in the city. Again, we're hoping the city bus stop onsite will, will provide some of that increased access. But as I live up in that northern part of the city and I'm very familiar with this site, there can't be a better access for physical activity than the proximity of Greeley Park on both sides, east and west of Concord Street. And this is simply really one house lot away from that access. The second, the, the next requirement under the section for meeting the standards is a little bit difficult to read and interpret. And I'm going to go with how it has been interpreted by the planning board in the past and the planning staff. I'm not sure all the citizens are aware of it, as there were a number of letters that were written raising the concern as to whether this applicant met this requirement. But the particular provision says, if facilities and services are so required for housing for persons 55 years or older. Again, I started off by saying there's a differentiation between housing for 62 years and older and 55 years and older. We're at 62, we're not at 55. We don't believe you need to meet this requirement. It does say that you need to meet half of the specific proposed either facilities or services that I listed, listed off in the presentation. We don't think that's a requirement and it's never been enforced by this board on a 62 and up age restricted housing project. However, I did tick off all those points and I believe we're able to meet those by putting in the stipulations within the declaration of condominium of the provision of those services. So they will be in what we lawyers call in perpetuity or forever. It won't be just offered and yanked. It will always be a requirement that they're there. I think clubhouse, just for a small project of this size, adds a tremendous amenity and allows for services which the ordinance requests and suggests. I would also add that the words that are important is that the restrictions, the HOA is obligated to provide those services either directly or indirectly. So it isn't like a requirement, you need to bring a doctor onsite once a month to do physicals or to have a chat with the residents. It could be an indirect facilitation through the clubhouse. The density requirements are the next requirement in the subsection four, and they are met. We have 12, which is what we're allowed to have with the acreage. The next requirement is pedestrian traffic has to be addressed. There should be, it's recommended, interconnected walkways, trails and paths should be an integral part of the design. Well, in this instance, we had to take a look at the site and you have to decide what's the most important thing in your design criteria. And as Tom suggested, there are two important design criterias. One located to the east, that's the Bates Drive residential neighborhood area. And we sit considerably higher than they do. And one to the west, which is, or north, northwest, which is the single family. However, we arranged housing on this site, be it single family, multifamily, you're going to have to deal with that backyard area. There's pretty steep topography. You could put walking trails down there, but in this type of project for 62 and up, it is not really applicable, nor should it be designed that way. You don't want people walking down the hill to the neighborhood. There's currently, if you walk out back there, which I've done, you will find a number of paths from the Bates Drive neighborhood up through the church property to get onto Concord Street. We're not proposing to continue those paths because it would result in people from this project going on to private property and vice versa. We just don't think that walking paths are appropriate. This is a, this is a urban type of location, as we all know. It's immediate opposite to church, it's adjacent to a loss, the law firm. It is on a busy Concord Street. And what we have come up with the design is a single level for the parking area, which allows access for all people walking around. It's a courtyard area, close proximity, people enjoy their neighbors. There's a clubhouse there, there's some sitting area outside the clubhouse. And then there is the walkways that are going to be constructed, giving access to the city's walkway, which ultimately lead to the ultimate walking paths in northern, in Greeley Park, which is simply two house lots away. The building design, the architectural renderings have been presented. The planning board, it's your job to design, to decide if the design appropriately covers appropriate massing and scale of building in accordance with the underlying zoning district. As Tom indicated, these are single-story, basically almost a ranch-style project. It's ranch-style viewed from Concord Street. It's a two-story from the back from Bates Drive. But the goal here was not to conflict with either the Bates Drive or the Concord Street residential neighborhoods. That's a, that's a tough challenge because if you go up several stories, two and a half stories on the Concord Street, on the area proximate to Concord Street, you'll end up with a fairly tall structure. on the area proximate to Concord Street, you'll end up with a fairly tall structure. And if you did the same for the 10-unit building, you're going to have a quite a bit taller structure looking down on the Bates Drive properties. If you walk around Bates Drive, you'll see a great number of ranches. That was the look we decided to go with in the architectural design. There was a great deal of discussion about what other alternatives, such as some of the big old Victorian houses and making them multifamily units. But it's really not appropriate for this site. I think, as you saw in the architectural rendering, the size, the space, the location, in fact, that the ground floor is down six feet from Concord Street. It's tucked away behind landscaping. It's tucked away behind the two-unit building and the clubhouse. I think it is appropriate massing for this site. It also allows the complete preservation of a third of the site in the back, without trees having to come down, without extensive filling to occur. So we think it meets this requirement of the proper scale in accordance with the zoning district. You also have to remember who your neighbor is. Neighbor to the south is a law firm, which is two and a half stories. Neighbor across the street to the west is a church. Neighbor to the north is a two-and-a-half-story house. The neighbor to the east is single-story houses. So we're trying to comply with the great variety of housing in the area. Finally, number seven is the planning board has to take into consideration the nature of the property, including the topography and the geographic conditions, and the impact that the development would have on adjacent properties. As I mentioned, you could put various types of housing and cluster them, but that would be a greater impact. We essentially took the footprint of the existing church, elongated it to the north, but stayed within the basic footprint in creating the 10-unit building. We tried to make it match what's out there. In fact, it won't even be as high as the existing steepled portion of the church building. It's designed to have no material adverse impacts on the neighbors. Having said that, we're aware that some of the neighbors have raised some concerns. I'm just going to quickly address them, Mr. Chairman. There's one suggestion that this is not in compliance with the historic district, but this is not a historic development. It's not in a historic district. There are other elements that are clearly not in the historic district right around it. Mainly, single-family homes. I think Tom touched on the fact that yes, to the north of us and to the northwest, there are single-family homes. And down on Bates Drive, there are single-family homes. But there's a mix of other homes just farther north, after the first three or four houses that are our neighbors. Now, there's the convenience store. There's several duplexes. There's a multifamily. All of those make up this mixed-use neighborhood. I think you could look at the tax maps, and you would see the variety of uses. The next concern is the impact on market value, either due to the architectural nature of the design or the fact that you're putting 10 units in a single building here, and it's a multifamily building. What we did was I engaged an independent appraiser. And I'm afraid to say, maybe somehow, the letter that I submitted didn't end up with the city of Nashua or with the planning department. That's one of the, one of the risks that take place in this era of the pandemic. But I did engage J. Chat Rogers LLC. And I don't know, Tom, whether you, I sent you an email just tonight while you were making your presentation. I don't know whether you have the ability to call that up on your screen. But I'm going to quickly cover it while you're attempting to call it up. It's dated March 30, J. Chat Rogers. It's addressed to Attorney Hollis. "I visited 115 Concord Street, January 21, and toured the neighborhood in all directions, paying particular attention to abutters and their relationship to the subject. My mission was to determine what effect the proposed multifamily two-story development would have on the neighborhood. Since that time, the proposed development has changed from a two-story, 10-unit building to a single-story, 10-unit elderly housing development with two more single-story units and a clubhouse closer to the street. All units will be at approximately the same level, all below street grade, approximately where the current pavement is located. The abutter immediately to the south of 111 Concord Street is a two-story law office. The building is very close to the street, and such that the rear of the law office is about the same setback as the front of the 10-unit building in the new plan, and the buildings are over 100 feet apart. The only single-family residence abutter to the south at Backlot 109 Concord Street, assessed at about $310,000, currently has a privacy fence around the perimeter in addition to a significant amount of vegetation, screening its view to the subject. 109 Concord Street would not be affected by changes made to the subject. The abutter across the street at 110 Concord Street is a church built in the 1980s in average condition. Changes in zoning at the subject to allow for the multifamily elderly housing would not devalue this property. Value to the church across the street may be enhanced, as there would be less traffic on Sunday mornings without the second church. The abutter to the north at 119 Concord Street is a single-family residence, assessed at $260,000. It is well-screened by trees and low vegetation. You cannot see through the screen. The screen provides privacy that ensures changes made to the subject would not devalue this property. Further north on both sides of Concord Street are single-family residences on both sides that are set well back from the street and will not be affected by the subject. This leaves only the abutters to the east on Bates Drive, parallel to and significantly lower in elevation than the subject on Concord Street. There are five abutters on Bates Drive, which are all single-family residences built in the early 1960s. Behind the subject building, the backyard is level for 10 feet, and it drops sharply to ground level for Bates Drive and the five single-family residences. The 10-foot-wide area behind the subject is too narrow for a playground generating noise pollution, for example. Therefore, noise would not be a factor. Concord Street is much higher in elevation than Bates Drive, such that the subject's ground level behind the new building will be much higher than the roof peaks of Bates Drive, single-family residences. Even with bare trees on that steep slope, it was difficult to see the single-family residences from the backyard. As the proposed plan indicates, preservation of a significant depth of the existing trees and placement of additional evergreens along the rear driveway, the natural screening will remain. New buildings will not be detrimental to any property values in the neighborhood." Oh, that's his opinion. If you go to the next page, I think you can, you can see what, it's essentially an aerial view, just what Tom showed, and identifies a single family. You can also see kind of the unique posture of this property. You can see the reference screening to the north and to the east. So I think all of those things were taken into consideration. If you go to the next pictures, which I think are very helpful, gives you some idea of what he was referencing. There's a back of the existing church and how it's steep slopes downward. The next picture is the view from what they, what they, looking out the back, view of 109 Concord from the subject. That is the single-family house with the picket fence that he referenced. It's behind the law firm. The next one is the view of Bates Drive from the subject. If you walked around the back of the church, that's what you see in January. The next one is, again, view of 11 and 13 Bates, which are sort of on the corner of Bates, more behind 109 Concord Street. The next one shows 13 and 15, all the way down, sort of in that back corner, if you will. And I think the rest of it is all his qualifications. So we submit that as evidence, Mr. Chair, just to address the concern raised by the residents that putting in this type of a project would devalue the property, their property, which is single-family residence. There's some precedence, there's some concern about whether granting and approving this would set a precedence. First of all, it must qualify under the elderly housing. Otherwise, it cannot be considered as multifamily in the RA district. So that's just simply not going to happen. Second of all, it has to meet certain requirements. This is really the last sort of redevelopment site available, if you will, unless they start tearing down the church across the street. I don't think this size of a project sets a precedent for anyone coming in and claiming a massive multifamily project. It would have to be an elderly, and it'd have to fit within the restrictions of the ordinance. All in all, we believe, the development team believes that this layout and location could not be more ideal. It's close to the downtown for the amenities that every elderly or housing for older persons should have access to and would ideally have access to, yet it's in a quiet portion of the city, so that those who are elderly won't be necessarily required to be in the downtown or necessarily be required to be out in the southwest sector of the city. I recently was involved in a project for another developer in the southwest sector of the city, detached condominiums, very well-received. The same developer did a more congregate housing style, multi-story off of Northeastern Boulevard, compact, no walking trails, very urban in style, and surrounded by commercial industrial and backing up to a residential project. And that just shows you the breadth, and that equally sold out as well. It just shows you the breadth and depth of elderly housing and why you need a mix. And this is just the perfect site and layout for this site. I think that with all of those, the only other issue that came up that I saw in letters of opposition was a question of affordability. And while this isn't a criteria that this board addresses, and really shouldn't, I think you can't make any speculation about what affordability is. These are going to be smaller units. The, certainly the management of these units and the cost of the common area maintenance will be smaller because of the size of the project. On the other hand, as you can see by the pictures, they're going to be appropriate for the neighborhood. They're going to be an excellent investment for people who do buy. And I think it just blends in well. It's a good buffer between the non-residential use of the neighborhood and the residential uses. I think, Mr. Chair, with that, I'm happy to answer any questions, but I believe that it meets all of the criteria under section 190-42 of the Land Use Code.
Okay. Thanks a lot. Does that essentially conclude your presentation at this point?
Mr. Chair, I'm sensitive. I know you've got a full agenda here tonight. I did just want to paraphrase quickly. We had one waiver request.
Yep.
Waiver letter dated March 31, 2012, 2021, related to parking, maximum parking. As you know, the code allows for 1.5 to 1.9 spaces per unit for multifamily use. We're seeking a waiver to allow 34 spaces onsite, where maximum is 23 by code. As I went through earlier, we've got 34 parking spaces, but this really includes garage and driveway spaces. So there's two spaces per unit with garage and driveway spaces. There are three additional spaces near the clubhouse, including the ADA compliance space, as well as the seven shared parking spaces along Lot 47. So we believe that providing two spaces per unit plus some additional spaces for overflow on nighttimes and weekends is reasonable, given the urban nature of the site. And this will certainly help minimize the need for, any need for on-street parking along Concord Street. Furthermore, we believe that the intent of establishing this regulation as it relates to maximum parking is to try to discourage the creation of large unnecessary impervious surfaces, a situation which results in less green space and more stormwater runoff. As I previously stated, this is not the case with this project, as the overage of spaces is the result of providing garage spaces within the established building footprints. Moreover, we provided a detailed drainage design and study that shows that our stormwater can handle any additional impervious area. Therefore, Mr. Chair, we're asking that the board waive this requirement here tonight. So in conclusion, we believe that the proposed application is completely conforms with the site plan regulations, including 19042, housing for older persons. We think the site is being redeveloped in a responsible manner, and it's really a great opportunity to help increase the city's housing stock where it's desperately needed. Attorney Hollis hit home on the points about the great walkability to Greeley Park and downtown amenities. I hope it's come across in our presentation that the applicant and our team has put a lot of time and effort and thought. We've reached out to a number of the abutters, direct abutters, to introduce the project, receive their feedback, and try to address their concerns as best we can. Lastly, we reviewed the staff report, and the conditions of approval are okay with us, including, Mr. Chair, the amended condition for about the $1,000 traffic contribution, as well as the amended condition number 12 as it relates to the amended site plan for 111 Concord Street. So that concludes our presentation. We'd be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, thanks. So at this point, I'll open up the discussion to the board. Anybody from the board have any questions for the applicant or their team? Mr. Weber?
Thank you. I appreciate, and I think the, even though it's one big building, it's far enough away from the other one, so it doesn't really, I don't see that it really impacts that. My only thought was, the back of the building, there's people will come out onto their deck, and because they're elderly, I think a simple three-foot fence may be in order. Something to consider, not part of the stipulation at all, just for you to consider because of the slope. And, and because they're elderly, if you could maybe put a fence that doesn't obscure, not a picket fence, not so much, I don't know, picket fence or whatever, just a railing thing, just to, they won't go beyond that point and fall down the slope. That's my only thought. Other than that, I, I think it's a very good thing for us, for the city.
Okay. Mr. Zajak, do you have any comments on the fence request there, and any concerns with it?
Yeah, I can, I can speak to our client about what, you know, what we can do there. I think the suggestion was maybe a post-in-rail type fence or something along there. Yes, certainly, we, we can consider that, absolutely. Like I mentioned, there's about a 20-foot bench there in the rear of the site. But we can, we can discuss that further. Absolutely.
Mr. Barley? There. And this is really a question for Attorney Hollis. And I, you know, I think I agree with your, your read of the ordinance and the statute in terms of the distinction between 55-plus and 62-plus and the applicability of the significant services requirement. But I did just want to clarify, obviously, you went through in quite a bit of detail the services you do believe you're offering. So I think I understood you to say that even if, even if you were to read the ordinance as requiring it for this project, which is 62-plus, you believe you've practically met that standard, even though you, even though you don't believe that it's technically applicable here. Is that, is that fair?
That is correct. Yes. I think we meet more than half and can do so by including them in the Declaration of Condominium, that it will be required of those elements to be included in the clubhouse. For example, the posting of notices, the posting of referral, having, having the association sponsor a monthly event. So those items, as I went through them, we collected more than half, and that's the requirement.
Good. Thank you.
Other questions by the board of the applicant? Mr. Ballinger?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yes. Mr. Zajak, it looks like the color rendering that you have displayed currently, it differs a little bit from, from the black and white that we have in our, in our packet. I guess I'm specifically referring to the seven shared spaces with the abutting property to the south. Could you indicate where those are and whether or not that grass strip will be present? Because I think the landscaping element is completely lacking on the, the black and white version that we have. I just want to verify, if you could, if you could locate those, those spots on the plan and indicate whether or not there'll be a divided grass strip in that area?
Yeah, absolutely. It looks, Mr. Ballinger, that I've lost my striking on those seven spaces. But you are correct that they are located right here where my cursor is. Seven shared spaces, as it's shown on the, on the site plan. And there is about a five-foot grass strip that will, this, upon Lot 47, between our new seven spaces and their existing seven spaces that abut.
Okay. Thank you for the clarification on that. And just to be sure, and I apologize- And just to be sure, and I apologize if I missed this during the presentation, is there a formal agreement in place, whether it be a easement agreement or some other instrument that, that formalizes that, that those are in fact shared?
There will be. I know there's an agreement in principle or verbal agreement. I believe he is on the call and he can speak to that further in terms of the Weiner and Bennett's position on that waiver, I mean, on that easement.
I can speak to that also. We have negotiated with the neighbor and reached agreement on the terms of the modification of the existing agreement. Essentially, once closing takes play, once all approvals are in place, the new agreement would be in place. Also, the site plan amendment, as requested by the city, has been submitted. I'm not sure all of the elements of the application have been submitted, but the plan and the documents that would make that change have been submitted to the city. So it would be, there is a, an agreement on the terms, correct?
Okay. Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Ms. Harper, I think I saw your hand go up next.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and I apologize to the applicant because I do have a few questions. Have you done any soil testing? Or, you know, what does the, the land look like as far as ledge is concerned and blasting?
I can answer that one. Yep, we did a number of test pits throughout the site, the developed, the redeveloped areas of the site. All the test pits indicated, you know, deep sandy, well-drained soils. We didn't hit ledge. I think we went down at least six to eight feet in numerous locations, if not deeper. So we're not anticipating any ledge.
Great, thank you. And then in regards to the walkouts, are, will there be like a patio area for the walkout?
Yeah, right now on the plan, I think we're showing a six-by-six deck, which would be off the first floor on the front, so second floor in the back. I do think there would likely be a small, a small patio area or landing coming out of the back of the buildings.
And will there be any lighting? Because I didn't see any lighting on the back of the building, just on the lighting plan.
No, I don't believe or propose any, any back there.
Okay. And then my last question is just in regards to snow storage. Just because in looking at the plan, it would look like maybe there'd be storage at the north end of the property. And then I was just kind of wondering how that would look like for Unit 1 and 11 as far as backing out of their driveways.
Yeah, yeah, no, no doubt, a very compact urban site, very little room for snow storage. I believe I've added a note to the latest site plan that speaks to essentially snow is going to be stored in open areas of the site. But once those storage volumes are exceeded, which is going to be pretty quick in this case, that those, that snow will be, you know, trucked off-site in a legal manner and disposed of. There aren't, there aren't large snow storage areas out here on this particular site.
Okay. Oh, I'm sorry. I have one more question. In regards to trash removal, how, how is that going to work? Is there a dumpster or will each unit have their own?
Yeah, I understand. Correct. Yep. Sorry for interrupting. Yes, each unit will have their own trash receptacle and it'll be picked up, you know, curbside by a private contractor. There is no centralized dumpster area.
Great, thank you.
All right. Other questions of the applicant by the board? I think I can see everybody. Maybe Mr. Zajak, you can stop sharing for a second. Okay, all right. I'm not hearing any other questions at this point by the board. I've seen anybody waving, so. I'm going to go ahead and open then to the public. Again, if you have a, would like to speak in favor, opposition or concern, go ahead and raise your hand and unmute. And then we'll take people kind of hopefully in some order and make sure you state your name and address for record. All right. I do see Alderman Dowe waving, so I will go ahead and recognize Alderman Dowe.
Okay, thank you. I'm in favor of this particular project. I think you've received my letter. I had an opportunity to review the, the plans for this project. I think it provides an enhancement to the, to the neighborhood. And I know right now, 62 and older, we have very little, if any, availability for, for those types of, the people who want to locate in that type of community. Crimson Properties builds very quality projects and they have built other 62 and older. And the people that live there are very satisfied with their, their homes. They, they go out of their way to make sure that they are well-built and will meet all their requirements that they would have in your, in your requirements of the, to the city. Also, this adds to the tax revenue for the City of Nashua as Chair of the Budget Committee. That concerns me. So any additional funds coming into the city at this point in time are extremely important. Also, I think if you're 62 and older, this is an outstanding location. Walkability and use of Greeley Park, it's outstanding for somebody in that age category. It's, it's a great opportunity to use the facilities there and the different events that happen there. Also, it's very close to Henry Burke Highway, so it's easy access to the highway system and, and downtown if necessary. So I, I think this is a great enhancement to the neighborhood and is well-designed. And I know it will be well-built, so thank you.
Okay, thanks. Anybody else? Okay, I'm going to recognize Lori Topen, maybe. Okay, go ahead and unmute and state your name and address for record, please.
Hi, I'm Laurie Tupin. I live in Brookline, New Hampshire, but I represent the First Church of Christ Scientist. I'm a board member over there. And I just wanted to speak real briefly. Last year when we decided to sell the building, it was through a lot of discussion because we just became evident that there was a lot of repairs and so forth needed for the building that we could no longer. We chose not to put into the building and want to take our building elsewhere, a little more central, it's a little more accessible to the people of Nashua. And we were absolutely thrilled and Randy came forward with his proposals for the property because we wanted something to be respectful there. We were hoping it would beautify the area and bless everybody around. And when Randy first proposed, he had several proposals, but all of them. And we feel that especially this one, not only enhances area, enhances the area, but also will bless the neighbors, bless the people that are living there and the community itself. And his attention to detail and willingness to work with all parties involved is really impressive. And we are very happy to support this project. Thank you for taking me.
Thanks. Next up, I saw a hand from Jean Teller, Teller.
Good evening. I'm Jean Teller. I live at 112 Concord Street, which is right across the street from 115. Then we purchased our home in 1987. It's a two-and-a-half-story Victorian. We're the second owners. We bought them, we bought the house from the Ain Scous who lived there for 100 years and we plan on, we've been there for 20, 35 years. We plan on being there for 100. So we're, we're heavily invested in the area, any way you want to look at it. My concern is one of where is the area going? What are we committing to? We have here basically an RA-zoned area of single-family dwellings. You can talk about a duplex, you can talk about some rentals, but by far and large, it's single-family dwellings. What we're looking at here is a proposal for a condominium. As early, as late as March of this year, Mr. Trammell's proposal was for a 12-unit condominium. When that failed, or when that really didn't go well, it went from a 12-unit condominium, a 10-unit condominium to a 12-unit condominium that happens to be senior living. But what I heard in some of the earlier discussions, at least a dozen times, was condominium contracts, condominium, condominium bylaws, condominium organizations. So let's face it, what we're talking about here is putting the first condominium on North Concord Street. We are establishing a precedent. Any one of the properties here can support another 10-to-12-unit condominium. So what's to stop someone from going up the road and, and buying from my neighbors, offering my neighbors another million, million and a half for their property? We end up with another 10-to-12-unit condominium. Before you know it, we'll end up with nothing but condominiums in one of the areas that's the most picturesque of, of Nashua, Concord Street. So I'm severely concerned about that. As to the value of property, our property currently, we've expanded our property from 2,000 square feet to 3,000 square feet. We now have a four-bedroom, 3,000-square-foot, three-bath, three-bathroom, two-and-a-half-car garage. That's a sizable property. It's well, it is, it's worth significantly more than what these properties are going to sell for. You're talking about a thousand-square-foot senior property. They're not going to be selling for $400,000. These things are going to end up selling for 300 or less. When that happens, my property value will be significantly impacted. And we spent the last 35 years building up our property here and investing in Nashua. I feel somewhat concerned that all of that effort is going to be for naught. Moving on to the next point, the next point is that of traffic. I live on Concord Street. I'm on the front lines and I can tell you what Concord Street is like. While we were here talking, we had at least three motorcycles go by here doing 90 miles an hour. So when the traffic assistant, when the traffic analyst talks about the fact that this is a 30 mile an hour strip but designed for 40, that's not the case. I mean, they go in both directions. Not only motorcycles, it's high-performance cars. So much so that we've had cruisers sitting here in the church parking lot for, for hours on end pulling cars over because they're speeding through the process. Now we're talking about having a condominium across the street that's going to have anywhere between 27, 37, pick your number, cars coming in and out. Traffic analysts said they'll be going in once and coming out once. At least that's what I've heard. Guys, seniors are no longer people who walk around in walkers. I'm seven, my wife's 70, I'm 78. We're in and out of our property all the time. I don't expect there's going to be any difference there. There's going to be a significant traffic risk. In the summertime, I can't get out of my driveway. We drive a Jeep SUV Commander and we're fairly high. There's, there's park, there's, there's parking on both sides of the road from Greeley Park clear on out to I've got to be in a position where I have to pull out into the, into the oncoming traffic in order to be able to see anybody. There's that much traffic. Now we're talking about having all of these people across the street trying to do the same thing. So I think there's a significant traffic risk here that's being understated big time. In terms of the street, you know, we talked about that, that their street, we, we just had our street paved. If they start ripping up this street again, you know, it's going to be a travesty. We were told you can't do anything on the street, get everything done before we pave the street because there's a five-year moratorium. This week, we had a steam shovel out here from Mr. Trammell, or I think it was from Mr. Trammell, digging a hole. I, I have no faith or confidence that this street isn't going to be chewed up one more time. And if that's the case, why did we spend all the money doing what the DOT did best? Namely, put in a top-gray surface here. We've got a nice street now and I'm proud of it. I don't want to get to the point where we've got a whole bunch of, you know, patches running across the street, which is what's going to happen. But anyway, that's my, that's my concern.
Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Anybody else wishing to speak in opposition or concern, have a question? Excuse me, I didn't hear somebody. I think I saw a hand by Mr. Westgate. Go ahead.
Yes, yes, Mr. Chair, if I may, address the board for just a few minutes.
Go ahead.
So my name is Brad Westgate. I reside at 17 Preserve Drive in Nashua. I'm also a lawyer who works at Weiner and Bennett, the law firm that has the office at 111 Concord Street. I'm not appearing in a capacity as a lawyer, appearing in a capacity as an abutter. The board is aware, I believe, that I have represented Mr. Trammell on matters before this board in the past, but I'm not functioning as his counsel in this case. He has upgraded significantly with Attorney Hollis. The, the property at 111 Concord Street is owned by Greeley Park Associates. It's a partnership of which I'm one of four partners that own this real estate. The law firm is a different kettle of fish, if you will, than the property that, than the property owner Greeley Park Associates. Our property was initially a dairy-made restaurant ice cream parlor built in the 1930s. It looked like a wedding cake sort of building. Many of you, probably most of you don't, probably never seen pictures of it. In 1969, it was converted to an architect's firm similar to what you see today. In 1988, the law firm added rooms upstairs and became the building that's presently in place. A law firm purchased to build, or the, the partners of the law firm purchased that site in 1976. I've been working in that building since 1978, so I've worked there for over 42 years. I've gone in and out of that site almost on a daily basis for 42 years, except for the past year with the pandemic. Mr. Zajak and Attorney Hollis both accurately expressed the understandings we've developed with Mr. Trammell regarding the parking easement. We have an existing parking arrangement whereby essentially the law firm has parking rights on the church property for 14 spaces usable during our office hours. The church has parking space, parking rights for, on our parking lot for when they have services and on, I believe, Wednesday evenings or evening events. But we've come to an understanding. We've actually finalized the form of the easement documents that would terminate the existing easement arrangement and establish a new easement arrangement for the seven spaces adjacent to the north side of our building that Mr. Zajak has described. So all of what he and Attorney Hollis has said is exactly the case in terms of the understandings we've reached with Mr. Trammell, obviously conditioned on approvals in acquisition of the site by Mr. Trammell's company Crimson Properties LLC. The, we've shared this neighboring properties with the church for all these years. We pre-exist, our building frankly pre-existed everything out there, but for some of the older houses, pre-existed the Church of Latter-day Saints across the street, which is really the most significant property now built in the, in that immediate part of Concord Street. The, there's a categorically different nature to Concord Street, south of Greeley Park than north of Greeley Park. It's, it's, it's obvious as you drive from downtown Nashua up through all the way to Concord Street and all the way to the Merrimack Line. And it's, it's obvious to all of you, I'm sure. South of Greeley Park has the Victorian and then let's call them industrial era, larger-scale homes. Greeley, you then reach Greeley Park. As you drive past Greeley Park, on the left you see the playground setback, the bath, stone bathhouse fountain. On the right you see the music, uh, bandstand, uh, the park rec buildings, horseshoe pits, tennis courts. Then you come to our building, across the street is the Church of Latter Day Saints and the Christian Science Church just passed us. Greeley Park changes the character of Concord Street at that break point. What, we think that what Mr. Tranel's proposing is a very compatible use for that immediate section of Greeley Park that I've described. It's a good transition from the office to the northern section of Greeley, of Concord Street as you pass forward. Also, the condominium form of ownership and the nature of the housing lends itself to centralized management, consistent maintenance, consistent upkeep capability, as opposed to a sort of disparate set of residential uses that may not be under that same kind of centralized umbrella. And we think that's a, a, a good way in which to, to keep the goals that Attorney Hollis has outlined in place and implemented over time that work well. The traffic on the main road like Concord Street, of course, is it's something that people who live on a street like that or work on a, on a street like that, obviously become accustomed to. And no doubt the residents at, uh, at this proposed project would do the same. The circumstances in which as many cars parked along Concord Street comes, they occur from time to time. They occur when the Church of Latter Day Saints has a large function. They occur when there are events happening at Greeley Park. But you're used to them. You, 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 you know you have to deal with them because you're, you live there or you work there and you go in and out all the time. Frankly, it's in a way perhaps better for people who are accustomed to traffic circumstances by living or working in the same place to go in and out than those who aren't, who come on a, just a occasional basis. There's value in that experience. So we're in support of the project. We think for the various reasons stated, it works well. It's a quality idea. We're hoping that the board approves it. Thank you.
Okay, thanks. Uh, anybody else wishing to speak? I see a hand by a Margaret, uh, Weiner, maybe? Sorry, you're on mute, by the way, too.
Uh, my name is Margaret Weiner. I'm resident one nineteen Concord Street. And I am concerned with traffic. Regardless of what was said earlier, the slight incline just at the place where almost at the attorneys is such that when I try to get in and out of the driveway, it, you don't see the oncoming traffic going north. And I just feel that any additional traffic is more dangerous. Regardless of what the attorney just said, the use of Greeley Park with parking on both sides of the street and people not observing the posted speed limit in many cases is gonna be a real problem. And I, that's my main concern with this. And really don't think it's a good idea, frankly. Thank you.
Great, thanks. Um, I see a hand, but it's Adam F. You're, you're on mute, by the way, too.
Hi, um, we live at one oh nine Concord Street and of course we're set back behind the law office. Um, my concern was, since I'm back here, is the, the trees and we have a lot of hawks around here. I'm a tree hugger, I'm sorry. But also, when they brought up the traffic, it is really bad, especially around, you know, graduations. And I mean, it goes all the way up Concord Street. I mean, sometimes they even block my driveway. I can't even get out. I mean, this, it really is a bad problem. But, um, as far as the, the police officers being over on the church all the time, pulling people over for going like ninety mi- Actually, they, they smash into Greeley Park once in a while here, late at night. So they have smashed into the park a few times and kind of knocked off some markers. So it does happen, and I've been here for twelve years. But when, um, Mr. Terrell brought that up, it, you know, it was very concerning to me because sometimes I'll have to wait for them to move from the front of my driveway, just so I can leave. But other than that, I'm more concerned about the trees and the hawks we have back here. And it's, that's why we bought the property, because it was so secluded. And when they showed the picture of the back of the property to Bates Drive, it looked like just the little stragglers that were on the bottom. The bigger trees are up behind the church. And that's where the hawks are and all the wildlife. So, and that's kind of what I was worried about, you know what I mean? Because I love it here. That's why we bought the property twelve years ago. But, um, other than that, yeah, the traffic's a big problem. And we'll be here at night and we can hear them flying down the road, like they're going a hundred something miles an hour. I mean, you can hear them all the way up Merrimack. That's how loud it goes, motorcycles, everything. So, yeah, that's something to think about. Something to think about. The traffic is a problem. But that's all I gotta say. Thank you for hearing me out. But I did, I, I talked to Randy and I told him, as long as you don't touch the trees and, you know, give me my privacy, I'm good with that. You know what I mean? I had no problem with it. But then he did change it a couple of times, so I didn't hear anything from the city. And we really didn't know what was going on, because we never got no notice from the city that it was gonna, I heard from Randy, he came and talked to me. So at first, it was a, a different plan and he said he wasn't gonna cut down the trees. And then the second plan, I was just hoping he stills not gonna cut down the trees. That, that's the thing, because I got two plans sitting in front of me. So two different types of plans and I really didn't know what, I mean, yeah, he talked to me about it, but I didn't hear nothing from the city. So I didn't know what was really going down with you guys especially, you know? So thank you for hearing me out.
Thanks, yeah. Uh, anybody else? I see a Joe DeLuca. Are you on mute, Joe? You're still muted, yeah. Uh, there should be a little microphone on the bottom left of your screen, you know, click on, should have a little red line across it. Click on that and see if it opens up. Um, you can, Joe, you can also press the spacebar on your computer. Just hold it down. Go ahead, I can hear you, Joe. Gotta hold, hold the spacebar.
I'm gonna keep it down.
Yeah.
Okay. My name is Joe DeLuca, my wife's Lana DeLuca, who's, uh, Leo, President of one fourteen Concord Street. And I kind of support the words just said about concerning the traffic. Apparently, we had an, an analysis done. Uh, I don't know if they ever tried get, getting into the driveway and then coming out. It's sometimes not that easy. Uh, in my location, one fourteen, the road is flattened out, but there is an incline, just in the area where the development is gonna take place. It's very difficult sometime to see a car coming up that, that incline and judging its speed. Because a lot of people do not follow the speed limits, so they, these cars can come down a point very quickly. So it is an inherent danger. So when you talk about, uh, you know, people exiting from the condo complex, they've got to deal with that also. And, um, the question with the things that happen ever at the at Greeley Park and at the church, parked on both sides of the road, right up to your driveways, is a very difficult thing. So I don't know if they should be putting no parking signs out there or what, but, um, it, it is a problem. So, so the concerns with the road are there. And, uh, the other thing I was looking at was the, um, was the that two unit building they're putting up? Units eleven and twelve, I guess. I was just wondering how far back from the front lot line that building is. Doesn't look that, be that far back.
Okay.
So especially, uh, at one nineteen, the house is just abutting them not to, how she can see. That building could conceivably be a hazard as far as looking down the road where that incline is. So I, I have a concern about that building, unit eleven and twelve. Because originally, the project was going to be built upon the existing footprint approximately. So I don't know how big it is now.
Yeah, if you wanna take your mask off.
Would that be better?
Yeah.
Yeah, Joe, we can, we can ask the applicant about the distance there, then we'll, we'll follow up on that.
Yeah, okay. Okay, and there's also a concern about values. Uh, I know the appraiser said, well, it doesn't affect the value. But if you have your house on the market, they're on a busy street is one thing. And then they, people see, you know, a multi-unit building down the street. That does affect the abutting properties. I, I did real estate for thirty years and I was also a certified appraiser. And, um, so that, that's an opinion that I think there was rendered. But I think in reality, there is a difference of value, um, because of that. That's, that's about it.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, anybody else wishing to speak in opposition, concerned, have a question in the plan? Go ahead and unmute if you state your name and address for record. Linda, you seeing any, not seeing any waving either? Okay. Is, is there somebody like, um, A Souza that's been going in and out here?
You hear me?
Hang on, Joe, yeah. Go ahead, Joe.
Well, I just had a question as to, uh, they were talking about, um, the bus stop.
Yeah.
At the location. I think, you know, it may be good for the condo unit, but it seems to be, that begin, another problem, if it's gonna be on the street, I don't know where they're gonna put it. So it's gonna be on, in, onsite or on the sidewalk?
We can ask about that.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Anybody else wishing to speak or have a question? Public? Okay, I'm not hearing anything further.
I don't see anyone with their hand raised.
Okay, all right, I'm gonna go ahead and close down the public part of this.
Hello.
A Souza, go ahead and speak, yeah. Can you state your name and address for the record, please?
My name is Albert Milder, eleven Bates Drive.
Okay.
I'd like to make some comments, please.
Go ahead, yeah.
Yeah, I, I, I live at eleven Bates Drive, which is just below the, the church property right now. And, uh, to me, I appreciate this area of Nashua because, uh, it's, uh, mostly, let's say ninety or more percent, it's a one family houses with a garden around it. And I appreciate that very much. And, uh, I hate to see a big long building coming in. To me, looking at the, up to the, uh, new building or the proposed building, it's look, it looks to me like, uh, a ten unit ten house. There's gonna be a lot of noise from music or whatever coming down to us. And it just doesn't fit into this area of Nashua. And that's what I'm very much concerned about. And, uh, it ruins our property values. And, uh, it, it's just gonna be an ugly sight. I don't think we should have a condominium in our neighborhood. A big building like that just doesn't fit into this area. Appreciate, uh, listening to me.
Okay, thanks. All right, I think that was the last person, unless there's anybody who has not spoken. Wants to make a comment? Okay, so at this point, I will, uh, go back to the board. We're still in the hearing here. And, or excuse me, go back to the applicant. Um, so, Tom, there was several things came up, I, I think the major discussions around traffic. Um, there was one question about setback of the the front buildings, if you will, and the bus stop location. And, um, a little bit more on value.
Thanks, Mr. Chair, Tom Zajak, civil engineer with Hainer Swanson. I'll speak to some of the engineering related items that you talked about and then, uh, perhaps Attorney Hollis can jump in on the, um, property values question. To reiterate what we discussed before. So, um, I'll start with, uh, Mr. Tellier. Uh, talked about, uh, traffic's speed on, on the roadway, uh, site distance concerns uh, from his driveway, again, one eleven, uh, one twelve Concord Street, which would, uh, butt the site from the northwest. It's a property located just next to the church across the street. Spoke about onsite parking, you know, uh, events at Greeley Park that really back up into this area. You know, we looked at, we looked at as, as our responsibility, the site distances from our own driveway. And as I mentioned, um, you know, looking both left and right, or northbound and southbound, uh, we've got over five hundred feet, which well exceeds all ASHTO requirements for thirty, forty, fifty plus miles per hour. And, and so we certainly meet the site, uh, distance requirements from our driveway. I do know that there were some other folks, uh, who also mentioned site distance from their driveways. I, I think unfortunately, the site distance, because of where that little dip in the road is, again, where it goes from one percent to three or four percent, just, uh, you know, past our site in front of, uh, Weiner and Bennett at one eleven Concord Street. Unfortunately, I think those properties, one twelve, uh, one, uh, one fourteen, as you move north on Concord Street, the site distance from them, from their properties is slightly less than ours, just because we're located right at that slope and we can see very well in each direction. And as, as you go north on Concord Street, there is a little bit of drop in site distance because, uh, they can't see through that dip. Of course, it's an existing condition within Concord Street. You know, we have no control of the grading of the road. I've heard numerous testimony about, about the speed out there. You know, there's not much that, that we as applicants or we as property owners as, as one fifteen Concord can do about the, the speed out there. Uh, I, I will point out that, you know, I do believe, in, in my presentation, I spoke about how, uh, we quantified but did not take credit for the existing church use. Uh, my understanding is, you know, hundreds of, of seats in the auditorium plus some Sunday school. I, I, I don't know the specifics of the church use. I would guess, you know, the, the, the main contribution of their traffic is, is on the weekends, on Sunday. And, uh, it sounds like that would coincide or, or add to exacerbate the problem of some of the traffic issues uh, at Greeley Park, which, or, or the church across the street, which would also be kind of night, nights and weekends. As I, uh, you know, conveyed in my testimony based on our analysis, you know, our traffic uh, from a residential use is, is, is peaks more during the, the commuting times during the week as opposed to the weekend. So, I, I would say compared to the, in, in existing church use, um, we're probably slightly helping that. And certainly from a site distance perspective, we, we, we meet and, and well exceed all requirements from our, from our driveway. Though I do acknowledge from their driveways that there may be slightly worse site distance, either because of that dip in the road or on the, the, uh, westerly side of the property where Westerly side of the property where those properties are located, one twelve, one fourteen. They do have some vegetation and maybe some stone walls that are located closer up to the property. In terms of street impact, there, there, as I mentioned, the street is under moratorium until twenty twenty-three. We don't have any impacts proposed, any cuts to the street. If we did, we would require to go before the Board of Public Works for that approval. But like I said, we are not proposing any cuts into Concord Street. Ms. Ms. Weiner also spoke about site distance at one nineteen Concord Street. Again, I spoke to that in terms of the onsite parking and some of the events at Greeley Park, we have adequate site distance from our driveway. So I think we would only be helping in that regard as opposed to the church use, which would be more centered on the weekends and contribute to that 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 issue. Mr. De Luca also talked about site distance, no parking signs, I don't think that would be something that we would be. Able to post on a public way. In terms of deciding where people can and cannot park along along public streets. Now, that would be the city's jurisdiction, building setbacks, there was a question. The duplex units eleven and twelve, as well as the clubhouse, those are set back thirty-six feet from the right away. As represented on our plan, there is a thirty-five foot deed restriction upon this property. So we can be no closer with 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 buildings. I note that the the front yard setback in this zone is twenty-five feet, so we're another eleven feet past that. And if you look on our plan, you can see where where Ms. Weiner's house is at one eleven Concord Street. She is nearly at that same distance by the eye, it looks to be maybe a couple of feet set further back, but certainly. Nothing that we're proposing would impact sightlines from from her property. Lastly, the bus stop, we're still working with the city. It would be for onsite along the existing shoulder. And it would be just north of our site driveway. Located likely between the clubhouse and the duplex in terms of its location north to south on Concord Street. But that would be fully within the right of way, and we would be coordinating any efforts there with with city transit planning staff in in the city. Lastly, Mr. Mueller, down on Bates Drive, referenced that single-family uses again. We do acknowledge that there is a majority of single-family uses, certainly in this overall neighborhood. We've also well documented the the mixed uses in this immediate area and north of Greeley Park. Of course, this use that we're proposing isn't allowed use in the RA zone versus based on the land use code. And the view shed from Bates Drive. You know, as we've talked about, we're trying to protect that, we have protected that as best we can. Circling back to the other comment about trees from one oh nine Concord Street, I'm sorry, I didn't catch your name. The the plan shows the protection of ninety feet of that existing buffer in the back of the site. So it's about a third of the site, and and I do know there are a number of mature trees in that back location, so. I can testify that a large portion of that back site, the mature trees, the existing buffer will remain for our plan. I think I hit everything there, Mr. Chair, if there's anything I missed, or Attorney Hollis, if you wanted to weigh in on the. Property value issue raised by Mr. Tellier.
Well, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, very briefly, very briefly. I think the appraiser said he evaluated everything, looked at all the neighborhoods and didn't feel because of its setback location and depression from Concord Street. And its lack of height would not impact them. So I go with that opinion, and I also remind the planning board, those that have been on it for a while. That Hayden Green, just farther up north on Concord Street, up by the big one. There was a lot of objection and a lot of argument that that project would devalue people's property, and I think. It clearly did not. Values in that area and that neighborhood have continued to rise as all values in the city have risen. So I know there's a concern, but this is just not a large multifamily, multi-story project. That might be in the same category as. One of the abutters has objected to or concerned about. Thank you.
At this point, I would open back up to the board, following up on the public testimony and. Where, you know, the additional information from the applicant. Do you folks have any question on the board regarding? You know, for the applicant or staff while we're in the hearing? Mr. Ballinger, yeah, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, I appreciate the earlier testimony from Mr. Zajak and Attorney Hollis with respect to. The differentiation between the fifty-five plus and the sixty-two plus, but. What, where, did this application require any any zoning relief? And if it did, did, did you, would you be able to speak? As to what relief you received and for what purposes?
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Ballinger did not. Need any zoning relief, it is a permitted use, the density is allowed in accordance with the regulations, so. Did not need any zoning relief on the zoning issue, of course, it is an RA zone. Lots can be quite small, this property could be subdivided up, there could be multiple driveway entrances. And there could be no protective buffer because single-family house lots can be cleared. It could be cleared down to the bottom of the slope to backyards of Bates Drive with a lot of earth movement going on. So we tried to be very careful with the neighbors on this.
Thank you, Attorney Hollis, thank you, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Barley?
Yeah, just a quick thought, this is one other thing that issue that Mr. Tellier raised, he asked about the. The paving moratorium, and so I guess, could you just clarify whether there's going to be any disturbance of the of the pavement?
Mr. Chair, yes, I can confirm that there is, we are not proposing to impact the pavement out at Concord Street. We are keeping the existing driveway where it is, and all our utilities will be either off pavement or provided without impacting that roadway.
Thank you.
Other questions from the board? Okay. I haven't seen no further board member questions for staff. I'm going to go ahead then and close the hearing and move to the meeting. So for those in the board, so we've got. You know, resident, the. Development here in front of us, it's pretty specific, it's talked about, it's sixty-two. Plus, we've certainly seen some of these developments in the city. And I expect we're going to see more, you know, as things move forward. Personally, I think there's been a. Reasonably significant amount of of effort on the applicant's part to. To mitigate, you know, sort of the look and feel of the. Of the neighborhood, more so than many of our applications, let's, I'll put it that way. And I think that I'm sensitive to the traffic issues that. That the folks on the street have. Unfortunately, traffic issues, particularly traffic that is not about volume, but is about speed and things like that. I mean, that's really not a planning board issue. That is a city issue, but not this board. This board is is not a traffic enforcement from type. Group, but you know, we're, you are on the public record talking about that, and there's plenty of city people, including Alderman and others that are listening. So they have a little bit more impact on that, you know, and the same goes for parking along. Streets that that's not something the planning board has any jurisdiction over. But again, there are lots of people listening now that potentially do have impact. And you certainly as 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 members of the the city have the ability to to certainly speak up on that, so. So those are my kind of two cents on that, and I welcome anybody else's opinions on the on the plan here at this point, so.
Sorry, Ed.
It's okay.
Didn't mean to interrupt you. Yeah, so, Mr. Chairman, I think. You know, from what I heard in terms of the public testimony, what I read in terms of what. You know, folks had submitted in terms of written testimony. It seemed to me that the sort of two big issues were were traffic, as you addressed, and then sort of fit with the neighborhood and sort of related issue of property values and. And on the traffic, I mean, I agree with you. And I think this comes up a lot where. You know, the issues that were raised are were really existing condition issues. And while I think the concerns of the butters are very understandable in terms of the, you know, your speed of traffic and. And perhaps, you know, being able to, you know, have good sightlines because of parking on the street. You know, those really aren't issues that are in the control of the applicant, number one, and as you said, not really, you know, things that this board can address. So so again, while I certainly empathize with the concerns the butters have, they don't seem to to relate particularly to, you know, the project we're considering. And what, you know, was is within the control of the applicant. And then in terms of, you know, the the larger issue of sort of fit within the neighborhood and property values, I agree with you, I mean, I think the. You know, the applicant has has made really significant efforts here, in my view, to to try to. You know, conform as best as possible to what I agree is is sort of, you know. A variation in in uses and even within sort of the types of residential buildings that are in this area. Which range from, you know, the big old Victorian houses to, you know, smaller, more modest ranch houses to. You know, the other churches across the street now to other apartment complexes that are relatively nearby. You know, I think, you know, the architectural renderings, you indicated these are going to be, you know. Nice looking buildings, I think they they will fit sort of, you know, architecturally with with the area. And in while I understand that, you know, this is a, you know, sort of a different type of. Of use in in terms of the, you know, being a condo, I think as, you know, Attorney Hollis indicated, this is, it's not as if. You know, anybody could just go to another lot and, you know, you know, put up another significant condo unit, I mean, this, this. This development has to meet, you know, the criteria that are associated with the, you know, housing for for older individuals. So, you know, it wouldn't, I don't know that it necessarily sets, you know, the sort of broad precedent people are concerned about in terms of. There being lots of, you know, additional multifamily housing coming along this section of Concord Street. And and again, you know. While these particular properties are going to be smaller and thus, and thus, you know, may. You know, sell for less than some of the larger houses around here, I don't think that fact alone is going to, you know, decrease the property values. And, you know, we do have expert testimony here from an appraiser indicating that, you know, he doesn't. He doesn't anticipate that there would be an impact on property values, so I think, you know, those things combined. You know, again, while I while I appreciate the concerns the butters have raised, you know, in my view, it doesn't, it wouldn't justify, you know, not approving the application here, so. Those, those are my thoughts.
Thank you. Mr. Weber?
Thank you, yeah. Being older than sixty-two and can say that. People of at sixty-two and over will probably not get up in the morning and leave at seven o'clock or eight o'clock in the morning, they're. More up to sleep then and take off around ten o'clock. So that really. Probably won't affect it as if it were just a general condominium complex where people are getting up. Rushing out, going on to the Concord right away, hurrying up. It's, I think it's a different mindset, and I think also I I looking at the. The rendering of the places, I think it's a plus for the neighborhood, it's not a negative, I don't think it's going to negatively impact it at all, I think it's gonna. Improve the neighborhood tremendously because it's quality built, quality looking. And I think it's just gonna be a plus for Nashua, that's my, that's my thought.
On the board members, Mr. Peterson?
I think another important point that was mentioned by Attorney Hollis was that conceivably. This site could have been subdivided into smaller properties where all the trees could have been cleared out with multiple driveways. And it could be a lot more objectionable than to what we're getting. And when you look from the street towards this proposed property. It is lower elevation, you know, it's not like sticking up as an eyesore, it's somewhat hidden behind the rock wall, so. I think. It has nice views, it looks good to the. To the viewer. Thank you.
Okay. Anybody else on the board have any other comments? Okay. All right, hearing no further comments from the board, anybody have any comments for staff, I guess, man, I just have one question. So just for the sake of record and understanding for everybody that's listening in, if this was not a. I mean, if this was just a twelve-unit condo complex that was not. Sixty-two and older or fifty-five and older, this this type of construction. You know, wouldn't qualify, it's the fact that it is a. A senior development is what essentially. Is making the density on this site. Acceptable to our current lane use codes, right?
Partially, this is something that actually Mr. Zajak and I have discussed at length as part of previous proposals as well. There are certain densities, in fact, the density that's proposed as part of this project could potentially be achievable on the site. Even with an alternative configuration that is not elderly housing, so. There have been several comments made during the presentation this evening that. Either a single-family detach development or potentially a multifamily proposal could in fact be proposed here of comparable density. And be compliant with the zoning that overlays the property today, so. It is possible to develop to a comparable density without this being an elderly proposal.
Okay, interesting, you know, that being said, I think, you know, for the neighborhood. The fact that we do have it in front of us. So an elderly development seems to me to be a positive thing because it has less impact on the traffic and. You know, it's, it's, it's a little more, you know, more amenities and, oh, that's my opinion, I guess, so. All right, any other questions by the board? Okay, well, getting late, hearing none, I'm going to see if somebody wants to make a motion, so. Go ahead, Linda.
I want to make a motion, but if we decide to approve it, stipulation number three.
Yeah.
You change to May fifth.
Okay, May fifth. Good, thank you. Okay, Mr. Barley, I think I say, and go up.
I, yes, you did, so Chair, I would like to make a motion. I'm scrolling here to my page, so. I would like to make a motion to approve new business site plan project. Number eight twenty-one dash zero zero four seven. And that motion for approval would be with the finding that the the plan does meet the requirements outlined in site plan and our section one ninety dash one forty-six D. And that motion would be a total of. Stipulations. The first one of those stipulations is a wave request from section one ninety dash one ninety-eight of the ordinances. Relating to maximum number of parking spaces, and that wave request will read is granted, will not be contrary to the spirit and intent of the regulation. Stipulation. Two is written in the staff report, stipulation number three, to be amended to replace the date with May fifth, two thousand twenty-one. And then stipulations four through twelve as written in the staff report.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Barley, so we have that motion to approve with the twelve stipulations as indicated by Mr. Barley, do we have a second on it?
Second.
Second by Mr. Weber? Any further discussion by the board? Okay, let's get a roll vote on that, please.
Mike Peterson?
Yes.
Scott Leclerc?
Yes.
Adam Barley?
Yes.
Maggie Harper?
Yes.
Dan Hudson?
Yes.
Ed Weber?
Yes.
Bob Ballinger?
Yes.
Mary Hirsch?
Yes.
That motion passes eight to zero.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you for your time. Appreciate it.
Okay, um, recognizing that, um, we are getting very late here, um, I'm gonna just di- just address the board here for a second. Um, whether. And I guess I maybe by, uh. A show of hands here, does anyone, I I think that really that what we could potentially do at this point is. Hear the next. One. Or we could push everything we've got, um. Out to the next meeting. So maybe just by a show of hands on the board, I think I can see the whole board right now. Um. If you want to hear the next one. Raise your hand.
Right.
Mr. Mr. Chair, can it can can I can I ask a quick question, Mr. Chair?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm I'm just trying to figure out, I obviously, um, uh, May twentieth, w- we're going to have to.
Deal with the landing, and I imagine that's going to be quite extensive. Is is staff able to provide any clarification as to what other cases are going to be on the agenda that evening? Because.
Sure.
If it's, if it's an action-packed evening like tonight, we're we're kind of delaying the inevitable. So I I'm I'm just trying to figure out. Is the next meeting going to be a three or four hour meeting as well? So.
Okay. I'm happy to answer that. Uh, the answer is yes. Um, it will likely be a very lengthy meeting, and I would make a rare plea this evening that perhaps you consider. Uh, lengthening this evening's agenda in order to alleviate some. Pain and suffering on May twentieth. That will likely be a very long agenda as well. Uh, so, Mr. Ballinger, there are several cases, including not just the landing, but also one-ten East Hollis, which agreed. To wait until that meeting agenda, a lot line relocation, several referral items, and also likely two other smaller applications. So we will have a a packed agenda on May twentieth. I would add that, quite frankly, the remaining cases on the agenda this evening are, they are complete. Um, I, we do feel confident they are ready for the board to take jurisdiction and take action. So. We certainly recognize you may not get through all cases on the agenda this evening, but, uh, we are simply delaying the inevitable, which will be a very jam-packed May twentieth agenda.
May, may I ask one other thing?
Very good.
Apologize. I I don't mean to speak out of term or or to sound this ma- make this sound inappropriate, but. I believe the entire board is presently constituted, has already received quite an extensive history on case eight twenty-one dash zero zero six nine. So the the next case in order, so if we were to hear that. Um, I don't think we need to hear the entire history of the application unless it's absolutely germane. Uh, there were, I believe, several meetings of testimony for that dealing with right-of-way issues and paper streets. We. I I again, I'm I'm not trying to interject my my own opinion, Mr. Chair, but if we were to keep it flowing, um. Perhaps keeping it to the to the pertinent details might be. Might be best.
Yeah, I would agree. But I think we could, we could hear that case, understanding that it's, um, yeah, it is certainly a continuation of earlier. Testimony that we have all indeed heard several times. So. Let's take it one step at a point, Mr. Barley.
Yeah, just, I I I mean, my only comment would be, you know, taking into account, uh. You know, Matt's, uh, point about the next being busy. Uh, you know, I'm fine sort of trying to get through as much as we can, but I do think, you know, we should sort of. You know, establish some sort of cutoff. I I don't, you know, I I personally don't really want to go to like one in the morning tonight, so.
No. Now, I would say, you know, let's go to eleven. I mean, that's a pretty typical cutoff for us. Let's see how far we can get in the next half an hour, you know, so. Does that make sense to everybody?
Fine, fine.
Yep, okay. Well, let's get moving then. Okay. So, uh, next up on the agenda is going to be, um, new business site plan. Again, this is, uh, eight twenty-one dash zero zero six nine, Tally Automotive Group. Application and acceptance of proposed site plan amendment, N R eighteen seventy-six. Uh, construct a seventeen thousand six hundred square foot auto body shop. Um, can I get a motion by the board as to why this is ready to take jurisdiction?
Weber?
Go ahead.
So moved.
All right, so a motion by Mr. Weber to take jurisdiction. Do we have a second?
Okay.
Second by Mr. Hirsch. Uh, any further discussion? All right, let's get a roll vote on that, please.
Mike Peterson?
Yes.
Scott Leclerc?
Yes.
Adam Barley?
Yes.
Maggie Harper?
Yes.
Dan Hudson?
Yes.
Ed Weber?
Yes.
Bob Ballinger?
Yes.
Mary Hirsch?
Yes.
And that motion passes eight to zero.
Okay, um, so we'll go ahead and hear, and I I think, uh, Paul, are you representing?
Yeah, that's right. And, uh, I do just want to, uh, uh, make a point real quick. I'm actually representing, uh, the client on both this case and the next one. Uh, basically, what happened was, uh, the auto body shop was approved on West Glenwood Street. Uh, that application was approved by you folks last fall. We formally withdrew that application. We're now proposing the auto body shop on the D W highway site. And have a new, uh, storage lot, only parking lot only essentially on the West Glenwood Street side, that which is the next case. Um, what I would offer is that I'm more than happy to get through this one quickly, and then we can postpone the next. Site, which is on West Glenwood, to the next hearing, just to kind of split the difference if you folks are open to that. So. Um, anyways, I I'll keep this one short. Um, as you know, Paul Chisholm, professional engineer with Keats Northridge Associates, engineers and surveyors for the project. Uh, I'm gonna share my screen here. Uh, so I hope you all can see that this is the fully dealership down at one forty-seven D W highway, the main BMW dealership, Mazda dealership, and G M C dealership are located in this big building here that's existed for quite some time. Various, uh, parking display areas out through front. Um, along in the front is red arrow. We've got the the lows up the hill here, and you can see that big retaining wall that you probably recognize driving by, uh, several times. Uh, that is shown on the plan here. This, there's also, uh, really, this site is, uh, it's actually two parcels that the dealership is composed of. Uh, in total, it's a little less than nineteen acres total, all of this area and through here. Uh, it's a three-tier site, uh, first tier being kind of the main dealership and display areas. Second tier being, uh, what's today basically parking and storage, uh, along with the third tier as well. Um, a little bit more detailed of a site plan is here. Uh, really, we're focused on the second tier where that auto body shop will be relocated at seventeen thousand six hundred square feet. Uh, in total, um, there will be some other second improvements in here, landscaping, lighting, stormwater management. Uh, the dumpster and compactor are actually located right about in this area here. Now, that's going to be shifted over to this location. Um, to make way for obviously maneuvering for deliveries that occur back down in this area to the new building and also allow for, uh, emergency vehicles to access through the site. Um, as needed. Um. In terms of stormwater management. And I'll sw- switch to this page here. Uh, there's actually basically, uh, this site is mostly impervious, uh, in this area today. We do have a slight increase in impervious. Cover, although it is very small, especially considering the size of the site. Um, the stormwater is going to be improved. There's not a whole lot of treatment that exists on site today. So the areas that we're touching. Uh, in through here, we're actually be providing, uh, underground chamber system for infiltration, which will treat and. Uh, recharge a little bit of groundwater, and then we actually have a collection system and a hydrodynamic separator, an A D S Barracuda unit, um, that will tie into this drain line. Uh, basically improving water quality, checks all the boxes in terms of the city's requirements. Um, in terms of that. Um, which will be proposed, and then obviously a big improvement from what exists today, which is, uh, you know, salted and sandy parking lot. The, uh, lighting plan, uh, shows obviously a number of lights that will be taken down through this area, put up. It's really going to be a lot of building mounting stuff. Uh, and and a new lighter too here in the, uh, islands, um, in terms of landscaping. Um, you can see, we actually have a couple new islands that we're going to cut in. Uh, we don't quite meet the criteria of ten, uh, an island every ten parking spaces. So what we did is actually, we're asking for a waiver to allow alternate design. What that means is, instead of doing a an island every ten spaces, uh, what we do is, we figure out how many extra trees and shrubs we would need, and we kind of spread that in through the area here. Um, so you can see that there's a couple extra. Again, it would only really be one more island in here, and and two of these spaces would would go away. So. Uh, we kind of just spread that out and through this area here. The, uh, we did have a chance to review the staff report. We've also received comments from, uh, the fire department, from D P W. Um, I think, uh, there's really two, I guess, of the bigger issues, which I think, um, uh, I can address here tonight. Uh, which will be, uh, revised in our next plan revision, uh, which I believe D P W should be satisfied with. Talks about two different things. Number one is. They wanted a little bit more of an analysis on the hundred-year storm. Um, we'd be happy to update our stormwater management report to, uh, include that, but basically this site. Um, has a very minimal increase in in runoff off of it because it just has a small increase. Uh, impervious area that's going to be added, uh, across the streets. There's actually a very large, after you get through all the 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 treatment and stuff we're adding on our site, there's actually down in this parcel here in between the ramps and D W highway, a very large. Uh, D O T, uh, detention pond that actually takes, uh, a very large contributing area, um, a lot of, uh, Route Three, D W highway. Um, a lot of area that's, um, you know, several times the size of this site. So. Even though we do have a probably very slight increase, uh, in runoff going there due to a very slight increase in impervious area, it's going to be negligible. Um, so we'll, we'll try and find a way to quantify that and and sort that out with D P W, but, um. Uh, that's one item. The second is, I I I didn't understand, or we weren't, I guess, sure that, uh, this section of D W highway is actually under a moratorium. We were proposing a sewer connection, uh, down this way and to tie into D W, which is on the side. Um, after finding that out, obviously, it probably makes a lot more sense to actually have that sewer instead of going down to this intersection, stay on the property. And cut over to the existing service they have running from the building down to another existing manhole down here, which I think is going to alleviate a lot of D P W's. Uh, concerns with that. I know they were, uh, concerned with the traffic during that. Um, obviously. Uh, the moratorium on D W highway is a big issue there as well. So all of that will be cleared up. Um, in addition to, uh, the landscaping waiver, we're also asking for, uh, two other waivers. Um, number one is, uh, existing conditions. Obviously, we're focused just really internally on the site here. Uh, especially now that we won't have the sewer. We don't have anything going off the site in this plan. Um, so we've just asked for kind of a common sense waiver, I guess, uh, in terms of not having to locate everything, um, that's required by the letter of the law with that regulation. It just. It wouldn't do any good for the project, and I wrote, um, letters for all of these waivers. Again, happy to dig into them a little bit more. Um, the last thing is a building design waiver. So as you can see. Um, this is, this is dealership here is going to hide a lot of this building when you're driving on D W highway. When you're down at this intersection, you'll probably see the most that you would see of this building, which certainly wouldn't be the full length. Um, my understanding, as we, uh, look at the elevations here, is that there needs to be, uh, there's a specific length, uh, that a face of a building can't be uninterrupted if it's facing a public street. So what that would mean is they would have to have some sort of architectural feature in in dent or some sort of bump out or something like that, uh, on this space here. Um, which, again, I don't think that you'd actually see that. Um, if the board feels differently about that, I'm certainly more than happy to make a condition. Um, that we could work with staff to, uh, kind of meet that, the letter of the law on that regulation, but, um, it just seems, uh. Again, you're giving the location of this, you're not going to see really the full length of building. It is really kind of hidden pretty far back. I don't think it's officially. Uh, going to attract a lot of eyes to it. So, uh, again, I I felt it was something, we felt that it was something that was, um, somewhat common sense in 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 terms of just. Um, not having to provide something that's probably not going to provide a whole lot of benefit. Um, we did have a chance to read over the staff report. Uh, we have no issue with. Um, uh, the, uh, traffic contribution or any of the other conditions listed there. Um, and certainly, again, we, uh, are anticipating to resubmit, uh. A response to D P W's, uh, letter as early as next week, uh, which we believe should address. Uh, all of their concerns. I think, again, the two big ones that I touched on with a hundred-year storm issue, and then also, uh, the D W highway moratorium. So. Uh, just know that those are going to be cleaned up and those should not, uh, really remain. So. Uh, with that being said, I will turn it over to you folks, and I'm happy to answer whatever questions you have.
Okay, thanks, Paul. Um, just remind me the elevation to the actual F E ever turnpike is quite a ways above the building too, right?
That's correct, yes.
Yeah, yeah. So you're not looking at the faces of the building really from the highway. You almost be looking at the roof.
So, uh, yeah, correct. And in fact, from the highway, it's actually very vegetated. I don't know that you really. Uh, see it too well at all, to be honest, really, any time of year. Uh, you really kind of have to be looking.
All right, thanks. Uh, all right, are there questions of the applicant by the board, Mr. Weber?
Just a quick, um, I noticed that there's minimal, uh, landscaping trees and stuff like that, and this has a great deal of pavement. Uh, not a stipulation, just would would you re-look at it and see if there's any more, um. Trees or anything that you can put in the area just to offset the the heat that this does provide for the area. That's, that's my only comment. Bye.
Other questions by the board? Okay, I'm not seeing anything from the board. At this point, I will go ahead and open the hearing to anybody in the public, um, who has a question or wish them to speak in opposition or concern to the plan. Please go ahead and unmute. Let's take your name and address for record. I can see most of the public now. Too many left. All right, not hearing any. I will put it back to the board for any last questions of the applicant or staff during the hearing. Right, hearing done. I'm gonna go ahead and close the hearing, uh, move into the meeting. Um, seems to me like a pretty straightforward application. Um, I know the site reasonably well. The the building, I think, is hidden. I'm not sure there's any value in. Any stipulations about undulations in the length of the building. It's being that it's behind essentially a large dealership building that would seem to me to be kind of useless, frankly. I don't, I don't think anybody would see it. Um, so I'm not, I don't have any concerns about the architectural waivers myself. Um. Again, don't see any, uh, the other waivers. We've gotten the parking aisles. Um. Again, most of the time, the parking aisles, you know, we're concerned with people. Driving around in them and, you know, creating a racetrack or something. This is a pretty monitored site, so I don't, I don't think there'll be people. You know, joyriding around in that site without, uh, getting getting stopped at some point. Uh, there's obviously a lot of cameras as well. Um, so I'm not really concerned about that and the existing conditions, I think, is a pretty common one as well. So. Anybody else have any comments or questions that they want to talk about in the meeting here?
I have a couple of questions.
Sure.
What? Uh, in the staff report with the stipulations, like like item, um, five.
Yeah.
What would the contribution value be?
Twelve thousand four hundred.
Twelve thousand four hundred from the.
Thanks, thanks.
And that's calculated.
Yep. Number eight.
Number eight, uh, what is the, um, the date for Joe Mandola's? Um. Uh, letter?
A- April thirtieth, twenty twenty-one.
Thank you.
Right. Anybody else have any questions for, or any comments they want to make in the meeting? Staff or, um, board? All right. I guess, anybody want to make a motion? I can pray someone. Getting late. Mr. Weber, unmute, please, Ed. So, there you go.
Sorry. Okay. Uh, new business, eight twenty-one dash zero zero six nine site plan amendment, seeing the plan meets N R O one ninety, one forty-six D. Uh, stipulations. Stipulations. One through three will read, I'm sorry, the first one, one ninety two seventy nine E E. Which requires existing conditions to be shown adjacent property is granted. Funding waiver will not be contrary spirit and ten other regulation. Two requests for waiver one ninety one eighty four D one. Richard Cars parking aisles not contain more than ten spaces in a row without plant. Maria is granted will not and the finding the waiver will not be contrary spirit and ten other regulation. Number three, quest for waiver one ninety one seventy two, which requires certain architectural features. And materials used is granted funding the waiver will not be contrary to the spirit and ten other regulation. Four as written, five, the contribution twelve thousand four hundred. To be paid to the Daniel Webster Highway corridor. Six as written, seven as written, eight prior to the chair signing all comments from email from Joe Mandola. Street consultant engineer dated April thirtieth, twenty twenty one should be addressed to the satisfaction of the engineering department. Nine through sixteen as written.
Okay, so we have that motion by Mr. Weber to approve with the sixteen stipulations as stated. Do we have a second on that? Second, my Ms. Harper, any further discussion? Okay, can we get a roll vote on that, please?
Mike Peterson?
Yes.
Scott Leclair?
Yes.
Adam Barley?
Yes.
Maggie Harper?
Yes.
Ian Hudson?
Yes.
Ed Weber?
Yes.
Bob Ballinger?
Yes.
Larry Hirsch.
Yes.
Okay, that motion passes. Thanks. Just Paul, just for record, the next one, oh seventy two, that's the parking area and. Sort of the top of the hill that we've talked about.
That was the previous site that the body shop was proposed on. It's now just a storage lot. I do see in the butter on here, I do suspect that there's probably going to be a little bit of discussion associated with that. We are still waiting for our AOT response to come back as well, so I don't have any issue with pushing this to the next hearing. To kind of get a little time to clear up some of those issues if if that's alright with you folks.
Yeah, I wonder if the. Is that a motion we should make to to concur that or to table it essentially?
I I would recommend that, Mr. Chair, just for the sake of noticing, yes.
Yeah, okay. So do we have to take it into jurisdiction now to do that? No, we don't, right?
No, yeah, we we can, we can not take, we can just make a motion to table without accepting jurisdiction.
Okay, so does anybody want to make that motion?
Actually, Mr. Chair, just just point order. Does it have to be continued to a to a date certain? Does it have to be continued to?
Yeah.
Twentieth?
Yeah.
So we're we're tacking on. We're starting the, okay, gotcha.
Yeah, it doesn't have to be continued to May twentieth specifically, but it does have to be a date certain. But it sounded like the applicant would prefer that we table it at least for now to May twentieth.
Okay, alright, well, I entertain a motion on that. Does anybody want to make that motion? Mr. Barrie?
Uh, yes, so I would make a motion to table new business site plan, case number A twenty one dash zero zero seven two. And to table that until the May twentieth, two thousand twenty one planning board meeting.
Yes, we have that motion by Mr. Riley to table eight twenty one dash oh seven two to May twentieth through a second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Peterson. Any further discussion? Let's get a roll vote on that.
Mike Peterson?
Yes.
Scott Leclair?
Yes.
Adam Barley?
Yes.
Maggie Harper?
Yes.
Ian Hudson?
Yes.
Ed Weber?
Yes.
Bob Ballinger?
Yes.
Larry Hirsch.
Yes.
That motion passes eight to zero.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you, everybody. Have a great evening.
And. Everybody up for digging into this last one? I see heads, yes. Alright, I'm gonna go ahead and then hear a case number eight twenty. This is a new business site plan. Eight twenty one dash zero zero four one sixty two Lake LLC owner application and acceptance of proposed site plan amendment. To N R twenty two ten to convert the garages and units four and eight into halfway house units and a waiver for parking spaces. Property located at sixty two Lake Street. Does anybody have a chance to take a look at this application? I want to make a motion as to whether it's ready for us to take jurisdiction.
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead, Mr. Hudson.
I don't want to make that. I don't want to make that motion necessarily, but I. For there are two other cases on the next page of the agenda, so I was just, if if we're not going to hear those tonight, we know that now. We should notify those applicants.
Yes, that that will be, that is accurate. Well, we'll get through this case in front of us. And then we will need to. Move the other items, so. Which ones do, for some reason on the agenda, I have a missing the last two and the one I have in front of me. Does anybody know the numbers of those two?
Yes. Yes, the first one is site plan eight twenty one dash zero zero seven four. At four fifty two Amherst Street.
Zero zero seven four, you said?
Zero zero seven four, yes.
Okay, and what's the other one?
New business, A two zero zero two zero five site plan. Five, seven, nine, and eleven domain F. D U M A I N E.
Alright, so those two. I think we can just notify the folks that are waiting on those two items. That would be oh oh seven four and oh 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 five. Those are gonna have to be moved to our next meeting due to just the time limit that we're running out here, so. Okay. Getting back to our agenda, so I was asking about. Eight twenty one dash zero zero four one. Anybody had a chance to take a look at that one? I want to make a motion. So whether it's ready to take jurisdiction? Alright, so a motion by Mr. Hurst to take jurisdiction. Do we have a second on that?
Second, Mr. Chair.
Second by Ms. Harper. Any further discussion? Okay, let's get him. Roll vote on that, please.
Mike Peterson?
Yes.
Scott Leclair?
Yes.
Adam Barley?
Yes.
Maggie Harper?
Yes.
Ian Hudson?
Yes.
And Weber?
Yes.
Bob Ballinger?
Yes.
Larry Hirsch.
Yes.
That motion passes eight to zero.
Okay, so do we have someone for the applicant for sixty two Lake Street that wants to present?
I see Richard Maynard on the, on the Zoom meeting.
Maybe he wants to take it now.
Well, let's make sure what we're doing. So.
Can you hear me now?
Yeah, I can hear you. Go ahead.
Alright, for the record, Richard Maynard from the Indian Park Engineering, representing sixty two Lake LLC. This project was last before the board in October of twenty seventeen, where the board approved the addition of five new units to an existing. Uh, ho- housing converted to three units for a total of eight units. This project has been constructed and it and it has been fully occupied now. They would like to convert the. The five new apartment units, which were garage unders. They would like to convert the garages into additional bedrooms, such that we'd have the house in front with three, three units. Standard number of bedrooms and the new five units would would would. Have five bedrooms each, so we'd have five, five bedroom units. The site has. Eight units, I mean, eight parking spaces. Outdoors and with the five units, the ten parking spaces in the garages. Eliminating the garages, making them bedrooms would give us eight parking spaces. For for the units. These five units were converting the garages into bedrooms would have occupants that were not allowed to bring cars on site. They will be. Transported by a by a van to head go. There are questions to convert the garages to bedrooms. As a result, we only have. Excuse me, we only, we only have eight, eight parking spaces where is. Excuse me, thirteen spaces are required, so we need a parking waiver. Otherwise, the site stays as is, as previously approved. It's strictly a waiver for parking. So we convert the garages to bedrooms. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor. And just to clarify, the, so you're saying the 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 five new. Bedroom occupants, they they would not be able to have cars. That's the intent. And how does that?
Forbidden to have cars, correct.
And and how is that? Managed, I guess, so.
Well, we only have eight spaces, so it'd be obvious is, and it's managed by. By the person who rents rents these apartments to put their clients in.
Alright. Other questions by the board?
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead, Mr. Ball.
If if the tenants are allowed to have spaces, are they allowed to have visitors with vehicles? Like, I'm I'm having a hard time understanding. How how you have residential units with with no parking spaces.
You're gonna have visitors, but. The tenants in the in the five new newest units were not allowed to have their own cars, correct. Don't forget, there's three units in the building in the front too, that's allowed to have visitors too, so.
Follow up, Mr. Chair. Is that is that written into a covenant agreement or a condo agreement? I I guess to to Mr. Chair's earlier question, I I don't understand the enforcement component of this and how you, how how one polices it.
Well, it is not a very formal agreement, but these aren't condos, these are rentals and. The enforcement is, there's not enough room for anybody to have their cars in there, so the landlord, the owner of the property will. Will be the one that enforces this and he doesn't. The car of our family owns several units and doesn't need it to have problems with the city about violating what they promised them, so. Anything else I can do? Or we can do to do that, he's absolutely not allowed to have cars, the occupants of these units, these five units.
Do you know, are they are they leased essentially, these units?
Yes.
Lease associated with them? Itself would would indicate that there's no parking.
Correct.
Okay. Other folks, Mr. Barley, had your hand up?
I I was actually gonna ask the same thing. I mean, I was gonna suggest if there if the rental units, you can include the parking restriction in the lease.
We can do that.
Yeah. Other questions, Mr. Hirsch?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, are these market units, you know, rented to the general public? Are they being used by some social agency? Some kind of housing?
Market units and a social agency has rented them.
So, so they've been used as a sort of transitional housing or something like that?
Correct. Correct, transition.
Are they giving studio apartments or are they gonna be tied into the units above?
No, the tiny upper units above, so they'd be.
Basically, you're creating five bedroom apartments, is that what you're doing?
They go from three bedroom apartments to five bedrooms apartments. The garage gets incorporated with the unit of, for the rest of the unit, which is on the second floor.
There's no on-street parking area, is there?
It's like. No.
So any anyone pointing to park a vehicle has to go like a couple of blocks away, basically, from that property. Is that right?
Anyway, they're doing what?
Anyone parking a vehicle on the street, looking for on-street parking, have to travel at distance to get to it.
Yeah, but that, yeah, that would be, that'd be violation of the agreement. Anybody living here would not, and these units would not allow to have a vehicle.
Thank you.
And it's no overnight parking on Lake Street either, so.
Okay. So, Richard, are the are the are the bedrooms sort of leased? As like by bedroom or is it, are they leasing the whole apartment and they just have basically five rooms?
There's, they're leased by bedroom.
By bedroom.
Five unrelated, it would be five unrelated persons per apartment unit.
Okay, so very much a transitional housing kind of concept.
It is transitional, correct.
Good. Other folks, Mr. Peterson?
Uh, yes, question for the applicant. The staff received an email from the National Fire Department on March twenty fourth. Saying sprinklers and interconnecting smoke alarms will need to be installed in all of these, each of these garage units.
Agreed.
Your plans to do that, correct?
Agreed, it's a, it's a building code requirement.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Barley?
Yeah, just to to clarify again, understanding that obviously we're expanding the number of bedrooms. Is this currently being used as transitional housing? So it's just we're expanding the space or is it not being used as transitional housing now?
It's currently transitional housing. We are expanding the the number of occupants by by creating more bedrooms.
Right.
Thank you. So sort of clarify, you know, the the big question here is just. We really, you really need the waiver of the parking count because of the number of occupants.
Correct.
That's correct. So the billing is really already being used for what we're talking about. It's just they want to put some more people in it. And that affects the parking.
Oh, because we're getting rid of some of the parking. And and by the, whether it's transitional, full-time or whatever, we wouldn't have enough parking, so. We 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 require thirteen, we only have eight.
Yeah. Okay. Mr. Peterson?
One more question. Where will the tenants take showers and go to the bathroom? Are there facilities available nearby?
No, no. These are, these are five bedroom apartments. They have full facilities, kitchen. Bathrooms. In fact, there'll be multiple, a couple of bathrooms per unit. And so this, these are apartments being occupied by five unrelated people. But they have all the apartment facilities. There's no offsite showering.
So there's more to it than just a bedroom. There's an actual small apartment.
Once, once again. We're adding two bedrooms to to each of the apartments. Am I saying it correctly this way?
Understood, yes.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Weber?
Yeah, go ahead, Mr. Weber.
Are they, is this in any way supervised housing at all? There is there somebody there that is supervising the?
There's nobody supervising on site, but these people in this transitional housing are part of a program.
Okay, thank you.
Matt in the Jeff's home?
I just wanted to clarify for the record, th- this proposal walks a very fine line of a true congregate halfway house. Living facility and what is actually being proposed, which is a a purely residential use that happens to be occupied. By individuals who are participating in programs and services offered offsite. So this is a bit of an odd. Use of the property, but in our opinion, it is strictly a residential one. The the Nashua, the Nashua zoning and land use code does allow for unrelated individuals to live in a residential setting. In a, in a non-congregate living capacity, just as Mr. Maynard stated, we're simply expanding that capacity. And I'm certainly not attempting to advocate for the proposal, but we do view this as a purely residential use because there is no onsite supervision. There are no onsite services being provided for the residents on the property itself. They simply happen to be participating in a program that takes place at our site and living together.
And it's it's already that program. It's just they're utilizing the space in the garages to create additional capacity.
Correct. Rather than, you know, a program renting at several, you know, island sites, they're able to, they somehow were able to occupy this one property. You know, I guess for the best of the organization, and that's why it's coming in in this form.
Got it.
Question from Matt.
Mr. Weber?
Yes, question from Matt. Matt, is there, uh, any way that this should, in your opinion, should have a certain, um, text or statement as far as, um, because we are putting it to this particular thing? Is there anything that we should deem that this needs to be stated as far as the type of housing? So that it doesn't become a precedence?
No, in fact, I would, I would urge caution to the contrary, in that we, I think the board, wh- when making your decision on this application, needs to look beyond the current tenant. I mean, obviously, that is a current cir- current circumstance, but uh, the fact that the current occupants may not have cars, future occupants may, and I'm certainly not, again, speaking to whether, you know, waivers should or should not be granted. But this approval will run with the land, obviously, so in the event that the board grants it, you are constraining the ability of future occupants of this property to actually have vehicles. Um, so no, I would not insert any language specific to this tenant. Uh, I think that would be, that would indicate a different use of the property. And the board obviously can't really make that distinction in its decision, so I, I would not recommend a specific language. And I would not recommend any condition relating to the individuals occupying the structures not having cars. I think that, uh, potentially could create problems down the road as well.
Right. But essentially, we're not increasing the number of units, anyway.
Right.
You, you are not.
The space within the unit is being used differently.
And that is the parking standards basis, right? The number of units, not the bedroom count.
Right.
So, Weber again, so if, and say this tenant, this usage, no, I'm sorry, this particular person who owns it, say, sell it. In order to sell it, they would have to convert this back into, come before the board, and then, uh, have these units converted back into a, uh, garage?
Not, no, actually, uh, in the event that they, they, they will likely do what makes the, the property most marketable. But provided that they are not, uh, going beyond the maximum permissible amount of parking spaces on-site, they would be permitted to reestablish the garages as garages um, through all the proper building permitting process. If they determine that, in order to sell the property, a different tenant requires a different use of that space. So no, I, I would not, I would not say that a future applicant would have to come back to the board to make a modification.
All right, okay. Other questions of the applicant? Mr. Ballinger?
Th- thank you, Mr. Chair, th- this might be, uh, better directed at staff, but are, are there any spatial requirements, either building code or health code-wise, that, that limit the number of occupants, uh, you know, per, per the square footage of the dwelling? And are we approaching that, exceeding that, below that? I, I don't know enough about that.
It's a really good question, uh, happy to answer, Mr. Chair. The, the Nashville land use code specifically, that's the one I can really speak to, Mr. Ballinger, I apologize. That's where sort of the bounds of my knowledge go, but we have a one-per-three-hundred requirement for unrelated individuals. Uh, I did speak to Mr. Maynard several months ago in this process, and the square footage does comply based on an expectation of four, or rather, five individuals in each of these, uh, these units. They do comply with the, uh, minimum, what would be a fifteen-hundred-square-foot requirement, based on that one-per-three-hundred. Uh, so they are compliant with the land use code as proposed. The fire code and building codes do not have strict occupancy standards, as I understand it, uh, within them. Um, because we have had several conversations about this. Um, NFPA is not directly applicable to this type of residential use. And the building code does not specifically, to my knowledge, dictate a, a maximum or a minimum, rather, square footage a per occupant, but I, I reserve the right to be corrected on that by the building safety department, but that's my understanding.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Sullivan, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Chris Donaldson?
Uh, so, so I'm confused, and I bring it up now, just so the applicant has a chance to address it, but um, you know, staff is indicating that this isn't pertinent to necessarily to the, to the you current use. Now, it would, you know, it would apply later. But the, uh, and, uh, you, you know, we shouldn't consider uh, any restricting of parking, but, but the, the waiver request specifically notes those things as justification for the waiver request. So I mean, how, how does, how does the applicant address the fact that, you know, this, this approval? You know, although, although the current use may justify it based upon those things, you know, uh, later, those things could, could potentially not be there, which, in which case, you know, maybe the board would have a different consideration.
If I may.
Sure.
If the situation changed, they, they, out of compliance, and then they'd be subject to be cited by the city as being out of compliance, so if the situation changes, uh, whether you wanna go back to garages or create more parking, surface parking, this room on the site, you'd have to come back to the planning board. It's the plan that this would be a long-term thing, years, not necessarily next year, to be back seeing you guys, so. I, I don't, I think that answers your question, but I'm not sure. You know?
Yeah, I, I think so, I just want, I just want clarification, if.
For the record, I hear you, I understand.
Yeah, that, that, that they, somebody would have to come back in the future, should this use ever change, or something change.
I did talk to, uh, my client, and I did ask that kind of question, this is, you know, you're not gonna be coming back to the, but in a year or two, and he says, we have a long-term agreement, uh, with the person, the group that's renting these, uh, these spaces. So that, that to me implies ten years, if not twenty, but anyway. So this is not something that's going in and out every year or something like that. In case you folks don't realize that you have the, you have these kind of situations all throughout the city. You, you guys gotta get back downtown in the city more to understand what's going on in our community. I live here, I socialize here, I know, and I'm in the business. I know when my multifamily projects end up in these kind of situations. This one, 'cause we're converting the garages, we have to come back to the board, so. But there's a, there's many of them in this city that, in the same place that this project is.
But thank, thank you for the clarification.
Yeah?
Just a quick clarification, because I believe I misspoke. So, Mr. Maynard's correct, in, in the event that these are converted, they would need to return to the planning board if this is in fact approved by the board. So I apologize, I misspoke, that is absolutely correct.
Mr. Weber?
Yes, thank you. As I'm looking at this, um, the request is just requiring minimum parking standards for the site. And, and Mr. Maynard did say that there was not gonna be any parking, but there's no stipulation here that states there will be no on-site parking available. And I think if he's gonna do this, then that needs to be a stipulation that we put in this, for this particular piece of property.
That's not what the plan says. That's not what the.
I just. What I'm saying is, I don't see anything stipulated as a stipulation that there's no on-site. You already had said that there's no parking spaces for these. The people won't be able to park on this property, well, then we need to have stipulations. If we're not gonna, uh, be able to have any parking, uh, facilities for this enough, then there's no parking should be on this property, then if you wanna put a stipulation on that.
Yeah, and, and it's, it's, it's the maximum, or I'm sorry, it's, it's the minimum number of spaces. So there will still be, as I understand, there's, will still be parking spaces, there just won't be a sufficient number under the ordinance. So it's the certain, it's the people with the new units who will not be permitted to park on the site, but there will still be parking.
Please read note five. Very carefully.
Yeah, there's, there's a note on the plan.
It definitely stipulates.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions? Okay, hearing none from the board, I'll open up, is there anybody in the public wishing to speak in opposition or concern? Or in favor of the plan? Not hearing anybody? So one last time for the board? Okay, I'll go ahead and close the hearing. So it sounds like we have sort of a somewhat unique situation, maybe not as unique as all of us expect, but, but, um, you know, I, I kinda understand it now. We're, we're basically just increasing the capacity, there's not a change in the units. It's not a change in the parking, but the way this is set up, you know, we do need that waiver minimum parking standards for those occupants to, to, to take residence there, so. I think these types of, um, sort of programs are pretty beneficial, you know, we need them for folks in the community, so I'm kind of in favor. Anybody else have any comments, or? Mr. Peterson?
Uh, my question is, so is it accurate to say that the, uh, garage dwellers, the, the new apartment dwellers would just have no parking privileges, other than, it's a regular apartment?
Correct.
Exactly correct.
Yeah, that's how I understand it. Anybody else? Mr. Ballinger?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair, I, I just still don't understand how it's, how it's enforced. Uh, policed, I mean, you, you can write anything you want on a piece of paper, but somebody has a car, they're gonna try to bring a car there. I, I, I understand we've been somewhat lenient in the past with certain parking requirements, but I don't understand how, how you do it with such small confined space. I'm, 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 I'm having an issue with it, um, in that regard.
Yeah, I mean, my, my understanding is, you know, the way you enforce it is there is no parking space. So if you only have four apart, let's say, five parking spaces, and someone tries to bring a car, there's no place to put it. Yeah?
No, and, and understood, I, I just, if, if you get there first, it, it's like, you know, after a snowstorm, you, you know, you clear your spot, you think it's gonna be there, but, oh.
Yeah.
Somebody else pulled in, well.
Right.
Then, I, I mean, I, I, I just.
Yeah.
To, to, to me, it, I, I think there's a density issue there with respect to lack of parking, um, perhaps over, overpopulation of the units, um, and again, it's my own opinion, I understand if it meets spatial requirements per code, but
Yeah.
I don't, I don't know how you build a residential, um, you know, unit with, without sufficient parking, um, so.
We, we certainly have other parking.
If I may.
Other units in the downtown district that don't have parking at all, right? You know, we, there are plenty of apartments downtown that have zero parking. And they just have to sort of fend for themselves on the street, so.
Yeah, and I would just say, I mean, you, we talked about, I, I think the, the way the enforcement would be in the lease, and I understand what you're saying, you know, Bob, in terms of, well, you know, somebody's supposed to enforce that, but I, I don't view that as being any different than a, than an easement, or, you know, condo documents, or what, what have you, I mean, it's still, you know, there's, there's still a little legally enforceable obligation. Um, so I, I, I view it from that perspective as, as, as sort of, you know, as analogous.
Hmm, okay, anybody else, Ms. Harper?
Um, yes, um, I too have a concern, uh, as does Mr. Ballinger. I mean, it's one thing to have a building that has no parking, but it seems like this property does have a driveline that potentially, you know, people could park in overnight without a landlord realizing they are, and possibly, you know, blocking emergency vehicles or that kind of thing, so. I mean, I do have a concern.
Anybody else?
Yes, I have something to say.
Go ahead.
As far as somebody like parking illegally in the alleyway, well, that can happen anywhere in the city. People park all over the place, and they get called on it eventually. And then the other thing is, we are becoming less of an automobile-centric society. These apartments are right near the downtown, some folks walk, they ride their bicycle, and they take the bus, and they, they live in the city and manage to live life without having an automobile. And I think these folks would be, have that lifestyle.
Mr. Weber?
Yes, uh, uh, a question from Mr. Maynard, he did touch on this, and I just wanted to have.
We're in the meeting, and the hearing is closed.
Okay, so, I'm, I think what I believe he said, I'm sorry, that there is a bus that takes these people to their places where they need to go, and then buses them back. So, I visited the site, there was no cars in the, in the site anywhere, but that doesn't mean that they weren't using the, the garages, but, um, I understand what the purpose of it is for, and so I'm not so disinclined to, uh, because like you were saying, these are needed for the city.
Yeah, and there's certainly bus service along Wake Street, I mean, that's a pretty common route, so. Okay, uh, anybody willing to make a motion? Mr. Varley?
Yep, uh, Mr. Chair, I'll, I'll make a motion. So I would make a motion to approve, uh, new business, uh, case number eight twenty-one dash zero zero four one, site plan. Um, and that would, that motion would be finding that the plan does meet the requirements outlined in site plan, NRO section one-nine dash one forty-six D. Um, and there will be a total of, uh, five stipulations. Um, the first stipulation is a wave request, um, from section, and are, from NRO section one-nine dash one ninety-eight with respect to minimum parking, that wave request would, is granted, will not be contrary to the spirit, tend to the regulation. And then, uh, stipulations two through five, as written in the staff report.
Okay, so the motion to approve from Mr. Varley, do we have a second?
Weber, second.
There was a, a second by Mr. Weber, any further discussion? Okay, let's get a roll vote on that.
Mike Peterson?
Yes.
Scott Leclair?
Yes.
Adam Barley?
Yes.
Maggie Harper?
Yes.
Dan Hudson?
Yes.
Ed Weber?
Yes.
Bob Ballinger?
No.
Larry Hirsch?
No.
That motion passes six to two.
Okay, thank you very much. Um, okay, having pushed the other items, um, I think the only thing, do we have a tentative agenda in the packet?
Did we, sorry, Mr. Chair, did, did we actually take, do we actually vote to table those?
I was, that's exactly what I was gonna say.
Yeah. Okay, so we can table that as well.
Yeah, and I actually, I think I, I, I misspoke earlier, I, we, we did technically make a, I made a motion to table last one. I think it actually should be a continuance.
Yeah.
Um, that's okay, because we haven't taken jurisdiction, so.
Yeah, okay. All right, so at this point, um, any discussion items, Matt, that we need to talk before we adjourn? Are we good to move on?
I think you are good to move on.
Okay, I would take a motion to adjourn.
Oh, oh, pause, Mr. Chair, I'm sorry. You, you do need a motion to continue the two applications until the twentieth at seven P M.
Okay, that would be.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Is it two or three?
Uh, the, you did already vote on.
But he said he needed to continue on the one he did.
Oh, no, so, yeah, just seventy-four and two oh five?
Yeah. Uh, seventy-two. I think it was zero zero seven-two.
Um, Mr. Varley, was your comment that your motion was to table and not continue, I'm sorry, I missed that.
Yeah, I, I, what I was saying is, I think it, it should have been a motion to continue. Um, I, I think, I, I don't think we necessarily need to take a new motion, I think we could just clarify that that was the intent. And so I think it's really just the two cases left, we need to, a motion to continue.
Does someone wanna make a motion on the last two cases to continue those?
Well, Ed Weber.
Go ahead, Mr. Weber.
Okay, new business site plan, uh, move to table, new business site plan.
To, to continue.
To continue.
And you, thank you, sorry about that. Uh, continue site plan eight twenty-one oh zero zero seven four.
Okay. I think you can add them both together, yeah.
Okay, I didn't want, I didn't know.
Yeah, you can.
Okay, I make a motion that we continue, new business eight two zero dash. Okay, I make a motion that we continue, new business eight two zero dash zero two zero five site plan.
All right, so we have that motion to continue eight twenty one dash zero zero seven four and eight twenty dash zero two oh five to May twentieth.
That's seven P M, yes.
Seven P M. Do we have a second on that?
Second.
Second by Mr. Varley. Any discussion? All right, can we get a roll vote on that, please?
Mike Peterson?
Yes.
Scott Leclair?
Yes.
Adam Barley?
Yes.
Maggie Harper?
Yes.
Ian Hudson?
Yes.
Ed Weber?
Yes.
Bob Ballinger?
Yes.
Larry Hirsch?
Yes.
Motion passes eight to zero.
Okay, now I think we're good for a motion to adjourn.
Oh, Mr. Mr. Chair.
Yep, go ahead, Mr. Ballinger.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I I I appreciate everyone's time, and and I'm gonna just just make this quick. I know it's been busy. Is it possible to receive a draft agenda for the May twentieth meeting in advance? I I I'm just trying to figure out when we can kind of get on top of this, because we've already got two meetings scheduled for June. There's only one in July, understandably. I I'm just trying to figure out if we're going to need makeup dates, and i- if we're already continuing three cases from tonight to May twentieth, are we going to keep pushing the burden down the road a- as we go? And and I understand there was some complexity in some of the earlier cases tonight, especially the Concord Street case, but just just for for the fairness of of applicants, I guess, as well as the members of the board to try to get some some understanding as to what is actually going to be, you know, out there. I I would appreciate that.
Yep, yeah, we can get that done.
And you'll get a new, you'll probably get a new agenda tomorrow for the twentieth.
Thank you.
Thanks. Okay. Come on now, motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
All right, it's a motion by Mr. Weber to adjourn. We don't need a second on that, so can we get a roll vote on that?
Mike Peterson?
Yes.
Scott Leclair?
Yes.
Adam Barley?
Yes.
Maggie Harper?
Yes.
Ian Hudson?
Yes.
Ed Weber?
Yes.
Bob Ballinger?
Yes.
Larry Hirsch?
Yep.
Motion passes eight to zero.
We adjourned eleven thirty two.
Everyone.
All right, I'll be in touch.
Thanks, everyone. Have a good night.